Four o'clock, and I would like to call to order the February 13th Planning Commission meeting and do so by establishing a quorum. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Moore.
President.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bivens.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Missel.
Here.
Mr. Karazana.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I will now open us up to matters not listed on the agenda from the public. Are there in, excuse me, yeah, is there any input from, thank you, Tom. You're welcome.
Mr. Moore.
Great, thank you. Just as a reminder, I think you know the drill, you'll have three minutes. And when the light goes yellow, you will have one minute left. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Tom Olivier from the Samuel Miller District. Until this morning, I planned to speak to you about rural areas with the change in the work session schedule. I thought I would briefly comment on a development area issue that is a longstanding concern to me. I grew up in downtown New Orleans, near the French Quarter. It was an old mixed-race, mixed-income neighborhood. Despite the urban setting, there were many trees, including huge old oak trees with Spanish moss draped from the limbs. I loved the neighborhood and all the things the trees contributed to it. In the 1990s, some of us supported a shift from low-density housing to high-density, walkable neighborhoods in Albemarle County. My support for changes in development area design stemmed partly from my recollections how rich life in high-density urban neighborhoods could be. However, I cringe when I see some of the newer high-density developments in Albemarle County. They're bleak, but they don't have to be. Tim Beetley, a professor in UVA's Architecture School, is head of the Biophilic Cities Network. The network consists of cities around the world committed to integrate trees and other natural elements into urban designs. Partner cities range from Austin to Verona to Wellington. I'm sorry to say that neither Albemarle County nor the city of Charlottesville belong to the network. By the way, Charlottesville has been steadily losing its tree canopy. Adding more trees and other natural elements to development area neighborhoods would add to the quality of life in our growth areas, perhaps help our mental health, make them more attractive to residents. These elements would reduce worsening impacts of climate change, such as heat islands, and would help conserve our biodiversity. I highly encourage the county to commit to incorporating more natural elements into design targets for our new comprehensive plan and to explore joining the Biophilic Cities Network. In the next day, I will send you web links to you and staff that provide more information. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other comments from the public on items not listed on the agenda?
No.
Now seeing none, great, thank you. We'll move on to item three, the consent agenda. I wonder if there'd be a motion for approval of the draft meeting minutes for January 9th and January 23rd, 2024?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Great. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
And Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. And we will now move on to the work session, CPA 2021-2 AC44 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. I'll turn it over to our worthy staff.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tori Kennalopoulos, and I am a principal planner in the Community Development Department. Today, we have a work session on draft goals and objectives for the Development Areas, Land Use and Transportation Chapter, and the Community Facilities Chapter for the Comprehensive Plan. And before we get started, I wanted to introduce Tanya Swartzend-Drouber, who started a couple of weeks ago as Planning Manager for Long Range and Transportation Planning. So we're really excited to have her on board and to have her diving into the Comprehensive Plan as well.
Welcome.
So we did want to note that this work session will be in two sections to allow for more time for discussion. During the first section, from 4:00 to 5:30, we will cover an overview of where we are in AC44 and the draft goals and objectives for the Development Areas, Land Use and Transportation. Then we will reconvene for the second section after the Special Use Permit Public Hearing Agenda item this evening. That public hearing starts at 6:00 PM, so the work session would reconvene after that agenda item is completed. And in the second section, we will cover draft goals and objectives for community facilities, and if there's any additional discussion on the development areas as needed. And I wanted to note that the agenda description for this meeting included the rural area draft goals and objectives. Those will now be covered at the next commission work session on February 27th to allow for more time for discussion. The purpose of the work session is to receive Planning Commission feedback on draft goals and objectives for Development Areas, Land Use and Transportation, and Community Facilities. We are using the following two questions to help guide the discussion as overarching considerations, and those are, are the draft goals aligned with the AC44 framework, and what is missing? We also have several additional questions specific to each topic, and we are estimating approximately one hour for a commission discussion for each. And after the work session, we will summarize the commission's feedback and share it with the Board for their March 20th work session on these same topics. The finalized goals and objectives will be used to draft the action steps that will be shared in Phase Three. Input from the commission and Board on the draft goals and objectives is needed to make sure we're headed in the right direction before we get into the details of plan implementation. So as a reminder, including for those who may be listening in, there are four phases in the Comprehensive Plan update process. We completed Phase One, which included developing the AC44 framework for an equitable and resilient community, and that is being used to guide drafting plan recommendations. And that's shown as a summary on the left-hand side of the screen with a community that is green and resilient, welcoming and equitable, connected and accessible, and thriving and prosperous. In Phase Two, which is the current phase, we are drafting goals and objectives and developing planning toolkits for coordinated land use and transportation planning. In Phase Three, which we expect to kick off this spring, we will ask for input on action steps and plan priorities for implementation, along with metrics to measure success, and then in Phase Four, have a finalized document with public hearings for adoption. There are eight planned chapters, each of which have goals, objectives, and actions. Goals are where we want to go as a community. Objectives are outcomes or targets to help us get there, and then the actions will be the steps to make the plan happen. Goals and objectives are drafted through an iterative and collaborative process by an interdisciplinary team of county staff in coordination with partner agencies and departments. This includes reviewing the current Comprehensive Plan, incorporating best practices, and using the AC44 framework. Refinements and updates are made based on community, commission, and Board input. The draft goals and objectives build on the community input we've heard throughout Phase Two, including on challenges, opportunities, priorities, and the planning toolkits. So our first topic this evening will be the Development Areas, Land Use, and Transportation. So this is a very brief summary of what we've heard to date so far. That includes providing safe and comfortable multimodal transportation options, especially to access key destinations such as parks, schools, and employment opportunities. And some of the issues to address there are barriers to walking and biking, such as high-speed and high-volume roadways, and a lack of protected and separated infrastructure, and a need for more frequent and reliable transit. We've heard support for the Activity Centers concept, and that should include encouraging infill and redevelopment, and pairing a greater density and intensity of uses with quality open space and recreational spaces and a protected natural environment. We've heard a need for housing choice and more parks and open space and tree coverage. So this chapter is organized with goals and objectives related to land use and transportation. The land use goals include the vision for the development areas and planning for future growth, and then investing in existing neighborhoods. The transportation goals include a multimodal transportation network, safety prioritizing the most vulnerable road users, which are people that are walking, biking, and taking transit, quality of life and access, and then planning for emerging technologies. So on the next slides, I have all of the draft goals and objectives. I'm going to go ahead and skip through those since you all received them in your packet, but during discussion, I'm happy to return to any of the slides if it's helpful to have any specific goals or objectives pulled up on the screen. There are several tools and maps that are used to guide Development Areas, Land Use and Transportation, along with the goals, objectives, and actions. As shown in the diagram, there are a series of land use and transportation layers. They include future land use designations, community design guidelines, activity centers, and the multimodal plan. Each property in the development areas has a future land use designation. Some properties are also designated as activity centers. And multimodal mapping is used to connect activity centers with employment districts, neighborhoods, schools, parks, and other important destinations. Future land use designations are applied to each property in the development areas to provide a guiding vision for the future use of each property, and they are used during the rezoning and special use permit review process as part of the consideration. In Phase Three, the draft feature land use designations will be applied to an updated feature land use map for the development areas using a one-to-one matching approach. The draft recommendation through AC44 is to calculate the recommended density based on gross density, which is a change from the 2015 plan that uses net density as the recommendation. And there are now 10 draft development areas land use designations, so that's a significant consolidation. And we wanted to note a few things, including that there may be some changes made during AC44 during the mapping process that reflect existing development, such as re-designating a parcel for residential instead of industrial if there is already an existing apartment building, or to reflect the intended future use of county-owned properties. It should also be noted that some master plans may have unique designations for specific areas that are not more broadly applied to the development areas, and these include the downtown Crowe District in the Crowe Master Plan, and Neighborhood Density Low in Crowe and Village of Rivanna Master Plans. Guidance for those unique land use designations is found and would remain in the master plans. During the commission's December 19th work session, some of the feedback we heard included to consider encouraging additional building height, consolidate the mixed-use land use designations, and consider adding additional density bonuses. With this updated set of future land use designations, we consolidated the mixed-use designations and now have three. We also turned the table of designations into individual pages for each to provide more space for photo examples and then hopefully allow for more readability. We have not made changes to building height or density bonuses for the future land use designations, as the focus for the higher intensity of uses is intended to primarily be in the activity centers, though we would appreciate any further commission discussion on those topics. We also have the Community Design Guidelines, which are an update to the 12 Neighborhood Model Principles, and also provide guidance for rezoning and special use permit applications. They are intended to support the growth management policy by encouraging developments that are mixed-use, walkable, and dense, with multimodal transportation options and quality parks and open space throughout the development areas, and they should use development areas' land efficiently. They are intended to apply to all development in the development areas, with some of the possible exceptions noted depending on the context of the site and the proposed uses. For example, not every individual development is expected to be mixed-use, though each development should contribute to a mix of uses throughout a larger area. During the commission's December 19th work session, we heard that the initial draft guidelines were too prescriptive, and we updated the guidelines to provide more flexibility and also created a separate best practices section as a reference. Some of the commission's additional comments will be considered through the action steps and further refinement of the guidelines, including recommendations for lighting and exploring incentives. The Activity Centers are places in the development areas that either currently or are planned to in the future have a variety of mix of uses, which includes businesses, services, and housing options, and those should be connected by multimodal transportation options and have access to high-quality open and recreational space. There are three draft center place types, which are neighborhood, town, and destination, and they act as an overlay that encourages a higher intensity of land uses. The Multimodal Systems Plan identifies multimodal corridors and modal emphases for walking, biking, and taking transit to link centers, schools, parks, employment districts, and other key destinations. During the commission's December 19th work session, some of the feedback we heard included identifying funding sources and partnerships for implementation, adding more off-street bike emphases, addressing major roads that are barriers, making center boundaries more flexible, and considering additional building height. We incorporated more flexible language for center boundaries and building heights into the draft center recommendations, and we will share updated multimodal and center maps in Phase Three and use the commission's feedback to help inform those updates. We also updated the format of the three center place types and some of the language to clarify the walk shed and center area and provide more flexibility for building height. We also added an emphasis on public, civic, and open space, on being publicly accessible and visible for town and destination centers. So these are the two overarching questions that we are asking the commission to consider as you all share your feedback on the draft plan recommendations. Those are, are the draft goals aligned with the AC44 framework, and what is missing? We also have several specific questions we would like the feedback of the commission on, and those are, do the land use and transportation layers, so the future land use, community design guidelines, activity centers, and multimodal plan clearly fit together and support the vision for the development areas as vibrant, walkable, and mixed-use? And if not, were there changes or more clear guidance needed? And when drafting action steps for Phase Three, what types of incentives should the AC44 team explore to encourage a higher intensity of uses in activity centers? So I can leave these two questions on the screen for now. I can also return to any of the goals and objectives to pull up specific language, and we'll turn it over to the commission for discussion. We're also happy to answer any questions, and we have several members of the AC44 team who may also come up to help answer questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Tori. I'll have to say at the onset that with all of this information that you guys have provided, I'm grateful we have a gifted and competent staff, because there is so much information here, and it's really, really well done. So with that, and I appreciate you having these too, I know, Mr. Barnes, you sent these out originally, or just this afternoon, so this is good to have this up on the screen. Also, I need to keep reminding myself of this, which you have done so well over the times we've been here, and that is that we're not necessarily focusing on action steps, right? But this last question does kind of open that up a bit. And so that, I thought that was an interesting point. So with that, why don't we start with questions, sort of, if anyone has any specific questions, and then maybe think about some general observations, and then get into maybe some things that we might find would be recommendations or discontinued dialogue. Sound good?
Sure. I had a couple, I had a couple of questions if you want to kick it off.
Please, I appreciate your doing so, thanks.
And they're pretty broad, and they actually are questions more than statements. One of them is looking at the overarching process we're doing, where we have the layers of future land use designations and activity center designations, and I was wondering why we do it that way rather than just rezoning? Instead, it's kind of like, these are the designations and the layers sort of waiting for a proposal to do a rezoning. Is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate, and that's been, you know, how the county has done that process to date. And that, you know, includes direction from the Board to use that process as well.
Okay. First year going through a comp plan, and I just was kind of curious about the process of, so the future, potentially, a lot of rezoning or SUP requests rather than just, hey, let's just do a broad rezoning. And I had a question, too, on Objective 1.7, the one of Goal 1. Where was that? Yeah, it's the first main one. Looking at the potential for future development areas expansion, yeah, it was the sentence that an expansion was found not to be needed with this Comprehensive Plan update, and I just noticed it was a passive verb that doesn't explain who made that decision.
That would be a question that we took to the Board of Supervisors that they gave us direction on, so to make it more active, it was direction from the Board.
Very good, thank you.
Great, yes, sir.
So Chair, this is, this is really sort of a who's in and who's out question. And so on page five, where we, under Development Area Land Use and Objective 1.6, when you said coordinate with the city of Charlottesville, the town of Scottsville, and the University of Virginia, I get that, and local surrounding localities, I get that, because those are all entities that can create policy and pass ordinances to enforce those policies. I don't understand why, I should put it this way, I am puzzling over why the TJPDC, TJPDC is there, because that's like an agency. In some ways, it's someone who will help to facilitate the conversation, but it has no legislative power, where everyone else has legislative power. And so we are really, and when we look at some of our regional, some of the regional activities outside of sort of what happens with MPO Tech and MPO, that if we're looking at how do we go to various entities, and I'm not saying to eliminate them, it's just I'm struggling with, they are not the same as the other people that came, the other entities that came before that. And so I'm wondering why they're lifted to that height.
So I guess the way I would answer that is, they are sort of a creation by state government, and they represent a regional planning body. And in some respects, your neighbors who, you know, the other counties surrounding you, they sort of represent some of those planning and long-range applications that those folks do. I'll grant you, they don't have quite the same budget power as the other folks you referenced, but I think that they do provide a connection to policy for people beyond the usual suspects, right, in our immediate neighborhood.
Okay, so I can, I can appreciate that, but I saw, I guess, if I were looking for the natural kind of areas that we'll need to coordinate with over this period of time, it's with Green County, it's with Louisa and Fluvanna, and I would place them higher than that, than that, I understand that, than that state, that state-created agency because of those are the people at the end of the day who can bring dollars to the table or can help apply coordination with VDOT or with any of the other sort of people at Richmond to try and achieve regional goals. And so I just didn't want those other organizations, so if the Green County Planning Department were to view this, I'd want them to feel as that we were viewing them as partners in this, as opposed to just sort of lumping them up under the TJPDC. So your explanation is helpful, but I'm also sort of trying to explain why I think we should be more inclusive of our, even Augusta County.
Duly noted.
Of our neighbors.
Great, anything else, Commissioner Bivens?
Oh, I'm sure I do.
I know, but I think that might rise to the top.
I will pause on this moment.
All right, awesome. Commissioner Murray?
Okay, in terms of multimodal traffic, what are we doing currently in terms of, I know, we've talked about use of Strava and Streetlight and other technologies to get some real-time data, where people are actually walking and running. Where is that, that conversation in terms of this process? And then also, what, what existing outreach is there to existing cycling, running, walking groups that utilize the growth area and the rural area so that, so that we know exactly where people are traveling? Because I think there's, it's one thing to say, this is where we think people are going to go, but it's a very different thing to, in terms of where people actually go.
Jessica Hirsch-Ballering, a transportation planner for community development. Commissioner Murray, could you please repeat your question?
Oh, okay. So most, most all of us who walk, run, or cycle wear one of these, you know, and increasingly the use of Fitbit, and then almost everyone carries around a cell phone like this. And, and I think gone are the days where we can pretend that there's no data on pedestrians and where they go. That data exists. So what's the status of county transportation, really looking at that data and finding ways to use that data, and our plan decisions about people really, where they really are walking, running, and cycling, and including that in our, in our plans?
Yeah, no, I think it's a great question. I think Tori did a really good job of explaining the Activity Centers and the data that we use for thinking about where we expect people to go. Things like Strava and Fitbit and Streetlight, those are all great resources, they cost money, and they also are reflective of the travel behaviors of a certain kind of person. They're not going to be reflecting the travel behaviors of our most vulnerable road users, our lower-income folks and people who don't like to carry things that track them. One other thing I'll say is that there's, there's kind of this famous line of, you don't measure the need for a bridge by counting the number of people who swim across the river. So the idea being that we, the travel behavior that we can measure in the ways that you described is really valuable, but it's not the only thing we need to be thinking about. We need to be thinking about, what are the trips that people aren't making right now because there's no safe infrastructure to do it? Does that answer your question?
It does, and I, and I appreciate that, but then I think there has to be a way to also get at where people are actually, what they're actually using right now. I mean, I think that that's often left out of conversations in terms of, you know, we know there are places that are actively used that are dangerous, and, you know, and, you know, I could, I could walk down to Ragged Mountain right now and ask like, hey, where's some areas in the growth area where it's, people are going, but it's dangerous, and Mark could probably tell me. So I mean, I want to know how we, you know, what do we do? I know if we were, you know, for example, discussing agricultural issue, then someone would have invited the Farm Bureau to the table. So what are we doing to really engage walkers, runners, and cyclists in that conversation about the places they know are unsafe or that could be improved?
Yeah, no, I think it's a great point, and the only piece I'll add is that I think that the public engagement that this process has done has definitely been inclusive of people and all the different ways they travel and all the different ways they wish they could travel. But I definitely hear your point, and we can follow up with more information about how we're moving forward with getting more of that hard data that you're talking about.
If I could, maybe a way to look at this is a recommendation that you're offering, which is to continue to consider alternative data sources to inform the use of transportation infrastructure.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Chair, I would also just add that we were talking about Ragged Mountain Running Shop, not the mountain.
Yes.
And we're talking about the owner of said running shop.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and not the gospel.
Thank you. Commissioner Murray, anything else?
I'll leave it, I'll leave it there for now.
Okay. Commissioner Claiborne?
First, just want to recognize that the staff, this is a lot of stuff that's here, so thank you for that work. I have a couple of comments slash questions that we can maybe dive into now. I guess this is probably the, we've seen this several times, it's different iterations, and I'm curious, how has the staff started to talk about like quantitative metrics? Like, how do we define success? Still lots of aspiration here, which is great, but I'm curious, has the staff started to have those conversations around what can we measure that can be implemented? And that's just one question before I go on to the next one.
We have started that discussion, but it's definitely still in the early stages, and I think some of it includes data that we already track, such as the percentage of new units that are being built in the development areas compared with the rural area, and kind of like the rate of construction of single-family homes in the rural area to see, you know, are we encouraging more development in the development areas? And I think also measuring things like, you know, tree coverage and access to parks and how those things are distributed, and if there's a, you know, more equitable way to plan for distribution and access moving forward.
That's great. I'm glad those conversations have started, and I guess my second comment is around cost. And so as I was reading through this, lots of the word invest, if you do Ctrl+F, invest shows up a lot. I'm curious, do we have a handle on how much we've been investing in these various areas in the past? What is a reasonable amount to expect in an increase in investment? How does that reconcile with the words on the paper, right? Like, always think of like donors, if someone has been donating $100 a year to a cause, expect them to donate $10,000 might be a little big of a bite, right? So with that as the context, I'm curious, have we started to look at, how much have we been investing, and what's reasonable to expect moving forward? And with that in mind, how do these objectives play in in terms of, we can actually do this? So has that conversation been, or starting to think about that, I should say?
Yes, in the early stages, and also talking with the Facilities and Environmental Services Department, looking like at our capital improvement program over time and what some of those investments have been. So we haven't specifically dug into that to look over time, but I think we're going to continue to look at that as we move into Phase Three, when we start including specific action steps that will, some of them at least have a, you know, public funding cost associated with them.
That's great. And then the last thing, or if it's a comment, just flagging, where do we have full agency to do some of the things here, and where do you need others, and do we want to tie our success to that? So it's just a So it's just a comment that I'll put there, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Christopher Firehawk?
Is general comments at this time?
Yes, or questions.
Okay. My comments are going to seem a little random, but I apologize for that. Just this really quick comment, I was really glad to see that trees have been talked about in here and native species. Like you said, you've done a lot of work on this already, and I do recognize our contributions in here. I'm just wondering if you can also add when you're talking about trees, not just native, but diversity of species? Like, if you think about the ash tree is a native species in Virginia, but if you planted that, they'd soon be dead because of the Emerald Ash Bore. So we want a diversity of species so they don't get wiped out. And then, just a, this is, like I said, this is going to seem very minor, and that for me means that I'm mostly pleased. The institutional images that we have in here, like on page 24 would be an example. You know, I think if we're gonna promote, you know, of course, we have institutions, and we want institutions. I'm sorry.
Of course, I usually don't get told I'm not loud enough. Institutional uses, I'm wondering if we can use some different imagery? Because that sort of idea of this mowed lawn with a big hulking building in the background, actually would like to get away from that type of design. If we want more welcoming spaces and also more wildlife and native species in our urban areas, so let's just scour the web and find some better images. So there's, there's a lot of firms who even specialize in helping corporate places restructure. And then this is more of a comment on the, I like to see the fact that we have live-work units mentioned in middle density or middle, missing middle, whatever it is. But I'm wondering if we can't have that in more places? Because, you know, there are a lot of people who work from home, and the, I've talked about this before, the county makes it really difficult, not intentionally so, but like, I always talk about that woman who wanted to paint in her shed, and we had a public hearing about it because she was going to be painting, and people wanted to, often she would, often she would have visitors twice a year, and they were talking about how loud would her painting be? And she was like, quiet, I don't sing to myself while I'm painting, you know, and it just, it became so ridiculous, the level of difficulty that just a painter had to undergo to just use her shed to paint because it was in the development area and it was zoned residential. So I guess, you know, I think we need to make it easier for low-intensity home-based businesses that don't generate visitation. And so somehow to emphasize that we like that idea of live-work. I noted though, in the, in the sort of harkening to a future code, it talked about fire-separated floors. If you were building a new building that was live-work with a commercial space on the first floor, yes, you would meet the fire code by having that fire separation barrier installed. But what if you were adaptively, you were using an existing building? That could be prohibitively expensive. So I just, I'm just wondering, I don't know if that's getting to the weeds too much, and maybe that goes in the actions, but maybe we could pay a little attention to that. And then the last comment, again, I know these seem very minor, but they simply reflect the fact that I like most of what I see here, is we talked about parks and trails, and we know that makes a vibrant, you know, development area, and that people won't live in the development area if it's treeless and hot and terrible. But I'd really want to emphasize again that we have county-supported parks and trails because we've talked about the fact that if we just rely on the development community doing infill to give us a little pocket park, what we end up having is, you know, the neighbors from the next development come and say, well, I sure hope that, you know, they're not going to come and use our little park because that's just for us. And we're not really getting civic parks and open space by just relying on the development community. So I really want the county to use its own money to put in some parks and trails to make the development area inviting. And the Board of Supervisors has toyed with the idea of a service district, which could be done, where you pay a little bit more in taxes, but you get a lot. That's how Fairfax County has financed its pools, community centers, parks, et cetera. So I know that that's not necessarily popular, but it is a way to finance that. And again, that's getting into the weeds, but I just want to, it's up to the Board of Supervisors, I know, but I would like it if our county spent some of its own money on getting that there because just piecemealing it from the development community will not get us what we need. That's, that's all I say, have for now. I have like little comment bubbles on my document, but I could send those later.
Great, thank you. Christopher Carazana?
Yeah, thank you. I also wanted to acknowledge the staff and not only the, the volume of work, but also the quality of the work. So and that you've, there's a lot of things that I've heard the Commission say that I can see incorporated here, so I want to thank you for, for that as well. I think, I have several comments, but I think I'm going to focus it on one that then we can, I can dive into deeper. So, and I'm going to paraphrase here from page five of your summary that you, that you provided for us. So development areas, land use, this is where I paraphrase, they are intended to provide land for vibrant, dense, and mixed-use developments that is connected by multimodal networks and supported by public amenities, and I'll underscore infrastructure. So at the heart of it, that's really what we're doing here, right? It's, it's, you know, how do we promote the appropriate level of development and growth and have the infrastructure and services that support that growth? Time and time again, we are faced with projects, typically housing projects, that are impacting our schools and our roads in negative ways. So, and the time that I've been here, that's happened over and over and over again. So part of my question is, how do we begin to think of a way to mitigate that? What do we have to do to align our objectives with our funding? So how do we align it with our capital investment plan?
Right.
And I don't see that in the objectives right now. And then, you know, you gave us the bridge to, to next steps, right, in Phase Three? So, but I do think it needs to begin with objectives. So what objectives can we begin to create that talk about aligning, identifying, number one, right? So how do we, how do we identify and then incorporate high-priority projects that are, whether we're, you know, maybe you can say, well, we identify them through master plans or small-area plans, or we have a lot of tools, right, on how we identify them. But how are they then prioritized and incorporated into our capital improvement plan? And I'm, and that to me is, it is a glaring omission in our objectives. I think that is a key, that we need to start thinking early on in the objectives, how are we going to do this? We, well, or at least saying, we need to do this. And then we can start about in Phase Three, how do we begin to do this? But I, I think that's a key issue here because it's, we don't have a, right now, in our current process, we don't have a solution. Our infrastructure is not keeping up with our development, or certainly our schools, our services are not keeping up with our development. So I'll leave it there, I have more on that, but I, to me, that is one of the omissions that I'm seeing right now. But in general, I'm, you know, I'm very pleased with the document, so thank you.
Awesome, thanks, everybody. I'll, I'll just throw in a couple of comments, most of these are kind of in summary, and then I think we will move to tackling the questions that were on the last sheet, I think it was the last sheet. Before I do that, Tori, I just wanted to double-check, are you done with the presentations between now and 5:30?
Yes.
So the rest of the time is free-for-all conversation. All right, great. Just wanted to double-check very. So a couple of things, or a few things that I've heard, and I'm trying to think of these, this in sort of layers to help me understand it, and I know you've described a lot of this, but thinking about the research, we heard some ideas about making sure that we look at all data sources and alternatives for bringing things together. I think, you know, the idea of researching not only with those tools, but of course, with the work that you're doing with the community. And just a reminder to those who either are listening or hear, I guess mostly listening, that there are opportunities for the community to engage in this. And while we're up here pontificating and talking about our thoughts, just a reminder for the community to please get engaged with this and help because that will be part of the input for the, for the research. The other is condition of existing infrastructure, so a baseline. And it reminds me of something I think Commissioner Carazana said, you know, we talk a lot about affordable housing, but really what is our current baseline? Where are we starting from? How do we measure that? How do we benchmark that? And how do we move forward to continue to improve that? So when we start thinking about action steps, we understand where we're starting from and where we're headed. I think that would be a good thing to do. And then that's sort of tied with the next category, which is findings. So once you have the research, you come out with the findings, and then that is tied to a word I think also Commissioner Carazana used, which was prioritization. So there's lots of great things here, and when I look at your key questions, I often will say, yeah, it does, it does fit, and it is in keeping with, and so on. But I think just making sure we also, while we're looking at this big grab bag of goodness for planning Almaro County and retaining and sustaining the quality of life we currently have, really having clear priorities, I think, is important. Also heard about the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, and involvement there, making sure things are aligning. As we think about next steps with this, to your questions, I think Commissioner more about the zoning ordinance, thinking about how this then ties to the zoning ordinance, and we'll get to this a little bit later, but there's some sections later on in this document that start to provide those hints, right? Like neighborhood centers, P, there were some others, I can't find my notes right now, but destination centers. How does that all play into the zoning that will come and evolve from, from a lot of this good work? And then the last thing I'll mention is just, like we talked about, I think with affordable housing, that the goals that we have, that the action steps that we take are aspirational, but that they're achievable. And so thinking through ways to do that is tied to the CIP, but also to other, other methods, methods and strategies. And I'm sure the development community is going to be looked at for, as a conduit to help to create this and sustain this place that we know. So just thinking through what, as we look through the comprehensive plan, what impacts this has to development in the county through the lens of a developer, I think is also important, not just a planner. So with that, why don't we move on? If you all, and if any of my strategies to tackle this make no sense, just tell me, but I think it might be helpful to move on to development areas discussion and using the questions that are in front of us here. But there were two others, let me start with those. Are the, are the draft goals aligned with the AC44 Framework for an Equitable and Resilient Community? Rather than going down the line, maybe I'll just open it up for discussion. Does anybody want to share their thoughts on that? I can call on people.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just the first question, or both on this?
Yeah, just the first, are the draft goals aligned with the AC44 Framework for Equitable and Resilient Community?
I mean, overall, I think there's a lot that aligns. There's a lot that's good in here, and I've got, I've got several comments on several sections, and I'm not quite sure how to parse them out in our, in our questions, is what it comes down to.
Let's do like a quick round of, it sounds like you're saying yes in most cases.
I mean, yeah, as far as a yes or no question, I think overall, yeah, I think there's, there's things we can do to improve certain parts.
Great, and staff, tell me if this is not helpful too, but, Commissioner Evans?
I mean, I would be, I would be goofy if I didn't say yes, after all the work that we did, so I'm not, I don't feel like being goofy yet. That may come later on. I don't feel like being that yet. I still, I still have that threshold question, and then it came at the back of it when those wonderful charts about what will we look like in 2044, and we need like 24,000 houses to be built, but yet we are, we are consistently, consistently under, under density. So whatever project comes is consistently under density, and so I think, I think Tori gave us at one point, it was like 50% under density or something like that. So I don't, while, while I can, I can just accept all of this today, I mean, with some modifications, I still don't see how we create a process that developers say, yes, I'm going to build at 100% density, and we're not going to have a bunch of people that come running in from the various places that they come running in from, that say, no, 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 you cannot have 100%, you cannot have 100% density next to me.
Yeah.
Even though when I got here, I was 100%, 200% density next to the person who was here before me. So to me, I really struggle with, I'm struggling with, while it's, it all makes perfectly good sense to me, but I don't know how we incentivize, and I can go into some economic incentives at some other point, but I don't know how you incentivize developers to deal with the political backlash. Because they can go someplace else where they'll say, yes, we want your density, and they can just go put up a building. And to use the word that, that our good colleague used, the agency piece, is that if you look at the way, you look at that we're so subject to the Dillon Law, part of our problem is, and I will also say, as it came to me when I was looking at these excellent, the excellent images, the maps there, part of the problem is that we are, we are a development, we have development areas which are diverse and unconnected.
Right.
And they live, and they are surrounding the city, and where they surround the city are very different. So one that may be at 11 o'clock surrounding the city, and one that may be 5 o'clock surrounding the city, it's a very different place. I'm just even looking at Avon Street Extended and Pantops. Those are really different kinds of places. And so the whole idea that we're trying to create a development area solution for as eclectic a group of development area that you could possibly have, just seems both hard and infinitely difficult because they are not the same. Avon Street is not the same as Brook Hills, or whatever that, I could never remember that, whatever that is, I guess it's Brook Hill, I'm just going to say that for right now. It's not the same as Pantop, it's not the same as Croze. And so we're trying to create an approach that will layer on all these various different land uses and at the same time trying to get 24,000 units. And I just, so, I just, you know, yes, it's good.
Yeah.
But I'm still hung up on, on, on how do you, how do you move these various pieces to be successful?
And I think that, that's a good point. I think what I heard you touch on, and it was a good reminder for me to look back at the framework piece, right? So you've got, the quadrants are green and resilient, welcoming and equitable, which you touched on, thriving and prosperous, connected and accessible.
And it's those, it's the last two.
Those two.
That I believe is a huge, a huge hurdle for us ever achieving those goals. Plus, we don't own the road net. We don't, we don't own the road network. We don't own the transportation network yet, maybe with this Regional Transportation Authority that's being talked about. If the university jumps in there, if the city jumps in there, if John jumps in there, then you begin to think of a way that's beyond multimodal because in order to be connected, it's not going to be with sidewalks. Sidewalks are not going to connect the development area.
I think another way that helped me get my mind around this question specifically is to ask it in a different way. Rather than are the draft goals aligned, ask yourself, of those four quadrant, what quadrants, what in these, this development area discussion is not aligned?
Right, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
I don't know, just made sense to me to think of it that way. I don't have an answer yet. Just thought it was.
Okay, just.
Yes, sir.
Just scanning here, maybe I missed it, but one of the things in here that I would like to see, and I said, maybe I just missed it, is, is it an explicit objective about redevelopment? I think really, you know, I see that we've, we've called out, you know, the, you know, development area expansion and a lot of that, but I think really digging into redevelopment as its own, you know, with goal and, with goals and objectives. I think that would be something that would be very important here.
Sorry, did you say redevelopment?
Yeah, redevelopment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's, if we're going to be successful in the growth area, I think that we really, we have these huge underutilized spaces, like, you know, Fashion Square Mall that we really need to focus on redevelopment.
Could I add infill to that as well?
You could add infill to that. I mean, my, my issue with infill is how it's been abused in the past, and that often infill has been applied to greenfields, and I'm not necessarily sure that we should infill all greenfields.
I think what I was saying is within the development area that's already defined, helping us to maximize density through infill as well as reuse, I think, is important.
I think, I think too, I think we definitely need to look at building height. I think there are areas that, that could stand to be more urban and inform where it wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to have, you know, higher buildings. In the previous questions that were up there about incentives for redevelopment, I think that we should really think seriously about incentives for structured parking. Particularly, I think we should offer TIF for, so tax incremental financing for, for structured parking. I think that that's just a win-win for everyone. I mean, because that allows you to, you drop in a parking garage in one of these, these massive parking lots and now you freed up all that other space that you can use for something else. It could be, it could be green space, it could be housing, it could be a number of different things, but you've really opened that up. The other, the other thing I think that's important too is we talk about the need for more green space. We definitely need a plan to get there. And I think one of the things too that I've noticed and brought up before is that, you know, we have areas that we've marked on the map, like we would like this to be green space in the future. When those places come up for, for development, we end up getting a sliver of that area that's marked in green, proffered back as green space. We need to do better than that. I think one way to do that too, I think we should look at restricting the footprint of buildings that are built within those spaces that are green. Because I think that even if, you know, you know, we're going to have some, you know, if you have a parcel and it's mostly green, some development is going to occur there, but at least maybe we can develop policies that encourage that development to go up instead of out.
I think I'm seeing what you're doing here, which is brilliant. You've moved us to the second bullet, which is great. So you've moved us to what is missing from the draft goals and objectives. I think a lot of what you've been sharing is that. Before we all go there, is there something? No, it's all good. Is there anything specific to the equitable and resilient piece that we want to make comments on? If not, I'm happy to just transition to the next one.
Well, I guess it just second, what Julian was talking about, because when I was thinking about equitable, if, there's all this language in here about how we're connected and vibrant and blah, blah, blah. But, you know, if you don't have a car or a reliable car and you live in, you know, like the northern part of the development area, it's terrible. I mean, I don't know how many of you have actually, I guess all of you have. I used to get my car repaired on 29, I used to have an office on Route 29 North and I spent a lot of time walking up, because I had an old car, walking up and down those streets and it's terrible. And, and so to just say like, there's shops here and there's housing here so everyone can walk, I just don't, I just think it's disingenuous. I guess the overall, I'll just say this real quick, I'll try to be quick. In Charlottesville, one thing that we did was we looked at, we did an origin destination study, survey and we looked at where people are trying to get to and we used that data to inform where we needed new connections. And we did a transportation plan that was like multimodal, but included pedestrians and where people wanted to wander. And so there's that element. We could do more with, more with that kind of analysis, but the, more importantly, we wanted to put more spurs and connections to the Ravanna Trail. And so we let, we figured out where we needed those. And so what happened is a developer would come in with an infill development and say, oh, you wanted a connection here because it's flagged on a map when I do my application. We want this. And then we worked with that developer, Chris Jensen, the trails coordinator, but then worked with them to figure out how to get that spur put in. And then sometimes we would have to give them a waiver on their sidewalk widths or something else. We did a lot of squeezing afoot here so that we could squeeze in that path that we wanted. But the key point was there was a plan that people, that would, you know, hey, this is one of those parcels we wanted to connect to, let's work closely with that developer. And we don't have that. So like you said, they give you a piece of green space, but oh man, if it was just shifted 300 yards to the left, it could connect. So I think that level of planning still needs to be done. So anyway, in terms of the equitability, you know, we also, and you were talking about benchmark data, last real quick point, we could do a more detailed land cover map for the urban ring and know what our impervious area is, would know what our tree canopy is, look at the equitability of which neighborhoods are hotter and less treed than which other ones, and then have a plan for, you know, adding that canopy back or incentives for tree retention, et cetera.
And within the development area.
Correct, yeah. Because it is getting hotter, it is getting less green and we don't have any strategic plan, we don't know what we're losing and we don't have a plan for trying to get it back.
For instance, Chair, when, at one point when we were looking at the Ryle Road Form Based Code, there was a bunch of discussion about the North Side Library being a place of gathering. Well, that just went out the window because the Phillips Building, the Phillips, the Phillips hardware that was right next to the North Side Library has just been purchased for an auto parts dealer. So the whole idea of how do you, how do you put, unless you take some of the parking from behind, but every time I'm there, that parking is fully utilized. But we had an opportunity, or someone had an opportunity to purchase a piece of property that'd been vacant for years, to create it into a public space on that side of 29. While that opportunity is now sort of evaporated because now they're going to put a parts store there. So I think what I hear some of our colleagues talking about is that, looking at some of those places that we have public and, we have public space now, or that as Corey said, we have agency, and think about, should we acquire the land next to it? And if we acquire the land next to it, we can hold it, but then perhaps we work with someone to turn it into more of a green space than a built space and so that we don't lose those sort of tangent or co-tangent spaces, opportunities to space that we already own.
Yeah, or just an easement, you know, to get across it because, you know, we do this with roads, you know, future roads are going here, this is going to be a dedicated future right of way, or it's reserved for something like that. You could do that with trails. I just think we need, I just think we're like, we're just hoping to get lucky is our current method. You know, we're hoping that progressive developer comes through and is like, you know what? I really should create a trail spur to connect to the Greenway to, you know, and, and, you know, this would really be great if my pocket park wasn't just a teeny thing, but it was next to the park next door and we could make a really cool park out of it. Just, yeah.
One of, one of the things I'm hearing about the equitable and resilient community piece, correct me if I'm wrong here, is that yes, there's a, seems to be a consistent yes, it does align. However, right, a recommendation to continue to assess and track. So if you've got this goal that you're, you know, of the resilient community and equitable community, it's great to have that, but don't just say that and then say, yes, it aligns and now we're good, so we'll go forward with this. But kind of assessing and tracking and holding ourselves accountable as a, as a county to the fact that we're continuing to stay within that lens. Is that fair?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Moore?
Well, if we're, if we're shifting into the.
Let's do it.
The missing from draft goals and objectives.
Yes, please.
I'm ready for that.
Shift away.
Well, first of all, I wanted to second what Commissioner Firehawk was saying about, about parks and, and I notice when I look at our list of county parks, we have quite a few, but a lot of them are very rural style. They're just trails and woods. The, the two parks that we have that are the most sort of traditionally urban style parks with the place where you can shoot hoops or, or, you know, gather with people are in Esma and Scottsville, which are not what I would call our urban core. And so it would be really great to have those kinds of parks. And yeah, I also agree, they need to be like county owned and county operated. Like otherwise we end up with these private playgrounds that the people outside the development don't know about and don't use. I also would just sort of add a little philosophy of parks to this, if I could get greedy, that, that it's not just the quantity of parks or the amount of acres or the amount of trees, it's also the, and while individual recreation on trails is fine and nice, and, and, you know, having these quote, natural spaces is nice, what I really want our parks to function as is social spaces, you know, the third spaces, the places where people actually do things together, where we have programming and where we have lots of activities that are set up for genuine community interaction and connection across the lines that usually divide us. And like I say, individuals walking on a trail is fine, but, but if we're working towards this thriving and resilient community, actually spaces that make that possible. I have a bigger one that's missing that's kind of related. We're talking about parks and actually investing county resources into those. One thing that we talked about up in Fred's backyard, the North Point, when the supervisors and us and the developers were all together, and it might've flew under the radar, I don't know, but Ned Galloway and Dantham McKeel and even Bee, Lepisto currently was sort of open to the idea, to the discussion of the county buying land for housing. And, and I think that's not on here at all. I didn't see it in the, in the goals or objectives. I do remember seeing it in this, this 2021, I think, housing plan from the county.
In the housing policy, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And so I don't, I don't think it's in here just to acquire more land. I mean, if we can do it to support the defense sector up by Ravanna Station, we can certainly do it to support our people and, and, you know, the ability that everybody can like live and work in the same county. But yeah, we can build, I've said this before, we can build these beautiful neighborhoods that people want to live and work in and that are attractive and affordable to people of all wealth levels. So that's another thing that I think is missing.
Great comments. Thank you.
Can we tag back on something that Nathan actually said, sorry, Commissioner Moore, earlier?
Oh, no, no.
Something you said earlier about, you kind of like unknowingly maybe pushed my most exciting button about density and zoning. I, I have many times and I'll not go up on my soapbox again and go all crazy, but I've talked about, why don't we just go ahead and rezone some of these places to the density that we want? Because it, because as Commissioner Bivens said just earlier, you know, like we get, we get a lot of NIMBY people coming out, not in my backyard, and we even get the banana people, which is build absolutely nothing, nowhere near anybody. And, and, you know, I, I just think it's really hard for us to write that we want this density and all this stuff. And then the developers come in and people come in and be like, well, that's nice, but just not next to my neighborhood. And, you know, put it, and they often will suggest the other neighborhood that it should go in, you know, where the developer doesn't own that land, you know? And how do we, you know, I just think we need, if we're really serious about this, we want to stop getting these proposals that are 50% of the density we said we wanted or even 30% of that density. We need to, I'm not saying we do what Charlottesville did, but we could go ahead and proactively rezone for some of this, instead of having somebody come in and ask to get middle density or ask to get something and then get run out of town. So I, I don't know if that's something we can say in here. And I know the board hasn't been supportive of that, but I just wanted to plus 100 to that.
I don't want to dominate the conversations of others have, but I have a bounce off of that too.
Go for it.
Okay, yes. And when thinking about, about density, yeah, it like guarantees that it's going to be a slow piecemeal process with like any opportunity for, for people to like object and pull back from what we say we want. It's, it's an odd, the layering part. I mean, I guess if the goal is to slow down, then that's good to have the, the layers of future land use and not just rezoning. But, but I don't know that we want to slow down completely because we're in a situation where people are being displaced, you know, where, where the, the average household income has gone up 62% in six years, not because we're all getting paid 62% more, but because people are moving in and lower income people are moving out. And that's not good for a community to only have that where the people who work here can't live here. The, so yeah, the plus one thumbs up, second, whatever you want to call that. I also wanted to second what Commissioner Murray was saying about building height. I just, I did notice, and this was a smaller point, so I didn't bring it up earlier, but the, in all the areas, there's nothing higher than five stories. Some things by 29 could very well be eight or 10 stories. Like why not? It's practically downtown or could be. And then the other one, this is, this is bigger and I think this is the one I really kind of came here to say. I pulled up the Almaro GIS map just to see where are these future land use designations, what do they look like on the map? And, and it was interesting, it was, it was a sea of yellow with like some little orange bits and a few red bits and some purple bits, but it was really a sea of yellow. And, and yellow was neighborhood residential, which is the least dense of, of the categories. It, it seems pretty inconsistent with using our land efficiently, which is the big goal here, right? That's really the whole goal of 1.4 is using land efficiently in an equitable and welcoming way. And so having homes people can afford seems like a welcoming equitable thing to me. But it's not just efficiency and it's not just equitability. I think it's also, to get to what Commissioner Carazana was talking about, how do we plan smartly for our financial future? You know, if we keep building stuff, that actually gives us more tax base to pay for those things. If you look at the, the sort of taxable value of the properties in Dunlora, very nice sort of Tony neighborhood, the taxable value per acre of Abingdon Crossing, now called Cobalt Ridge, is two and a half times Dunlora's, you know? So we get a lot more taxes from more dense units. Those taxes can pay for schools and for water pipes and mains and for, for roads and sidewalks and for, you know, all the infrastructure we need. And so that's the kind of, like just a straight up dollars and cents positive of density, not just, you know, more affordable for people to live, but actually the county coffers also benefit as well. My, honestly, my recommendation I want to put out there is to not have 10 future land use types, but to have nine and to not have neighborhood residential. Let's just make it all orange.
Make it all white, I'm sorry.
Orange, middle, the missing middle. And when people want to build more units on their back, they can.
They can?
When people want to build more units on their parcels, on their properties, they can. But we just make it all missing middle. We don't have a neighborhood density level. Neighborhood density is the suburban neighborhoods that have been around since the 80s and 90s going all up and down the cul-de-sac on 29. It's the status quo.
One, one thing that I might throw out there and staff can help me with this, but and I understand your point, just want to check, is this a conversation for zoning or is this a conversation for comp plan?
I think.
Both?
It's both, but I think what he's referring to is the comp plan does have the yellow, to use his vernacular, and so you could get rid of that and make it orange.
I guess the question there is would, if you kept it that color and gave it, you know, kept it yellow, would you not though, through zoning, have the ability to create more density within that and still provide yourself with the flexibility to not, where you had natural features and other things that limited it? I don't know.
Yeah, the actual color doesn't matter. I was just pointing out that everything that's yellow on there right now calls for three to six units per acre.
Got it.
Which is, which is what we have in the least dense cul-de-sac neighborhoods going up 29.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think we ought to really consider widespread, making it possible for people to build more units on the lands that are up that way, to call it redevelopment or infill development or however you want to call it.
Got it.
I would definitely agree that I think, well, I don't know if I'd go to that extreme, but, but I would, I would definitely say that we have way too much single family housing as it is. We've really squandered our growth area. And part of the reason that we're even having this conversation of, you know, you know, expansion of the growth area is because we've really wasted the, the space that we have. And so I would definitely support, you know, reconsider, reconsidering some of that single family housing. I think too though, that one of the big things along with this is we've made density a dirty word. Because when we say density, we mean strictly just a density of people or density of buildings. And we need, need to really start changing the language around what we mean by density and think instead, come up, present it more of a density of service, where we're not just talking about a density of people, but you know, if, if you say, it's not just going to be more people in this area, but we're going to have, we're going to have better schools, we're going to have better sidewalks, you know, we're going to have better places to shop, we're going to have access to more services and, you know, that's a very different conversation. Then people say, oh, well, well, actually more, more density is not a bad thing. But we've, but we associate density right now with a loss of service, with worse roads, worse schools, loss of green space. And, and that's what really has made it so toxic.
I'm going to sort of say, I think that's the general way of saying it. I think density is not about loss of services, it's about not having people who don't look like me or who do not have the kind of income that I supposedly have. And that the conversations we've had around density have been, have been covered by, I don't want people, I don't want. I don't want that kind of housing there because it will attract, it will attract these types of people. It's never been about a diminution of services. It's always been about the two big, the, well, I'll give you the big one, the one that went away, RST up there on 29. The community behind that project said to the supervisors, we want a fence around the area that was going to have perhaps the highest density, the highest floors, which might have the highest level of economically affordable housing in them. We want a fence around that, those people because they don't, we don't want them coming into our neighborhoods. That's not about services. That's not about going to the Harris Teeter or going to the food line up there and getting yourself some chips. That's about, we don't want those people to come and play with our kids, even though they're going to go to school with them, whatever, there's two schools over there. They're going to go to school with them, but we don't want them walking on our streets.
That statement about kids, too, was actually made.
Remember that?
Oh, about, yes, I do.
Remember that? So I understand your gentle and your kind way of saying that, but I don't want us to back away from the fact that a lot of what's happening here is that people have bought into single family housing America.
Yeah.
And with that comes, with that comes the history of the GI Bill. And I'll let you go figure out what the GI Bill is and why it was exclusionary. Okay? And so here we are in a place that is so much built up around that kind of lifestyle. Which is why some of you hear me talk about, when we talk about places out in the country, I say, I don't care about preserving your plantation view. I care about whether or not the services there serve people and whether or not we can have things there that make people feel like they belong, as opposed to whether or not you just moved from Virginia Beach and therefore you don't want to give up your beautiful sightlines. I could give a flip. But my piece on this is what I'm struggling, what I hear you saying here is how do, and I hear my colleague over here, how do we create community within density? How do we do that? What are the signals that we send to developers? So the developer says, I can come to this location. I know that if I start my application and work with staff on this day, X amount of days later, I should be getting a yes, go, go, whatever, through site review to be able to start throwing the first cast. Because that's really what comp plan is. It's about economic development. I know that's a nasty word in some people's faces, but it's about how do we create an environment that our built environment is predictable? So that I can make a decision with my resources on whether or not I want to invest here and that through that investment, we create a place that approaches Shangri-La. And so that's what I think we're wrestling with here. And in our particular, as I come back to our particular environment, we've really got sort of six or seven different lenses on the development area. That's not going to work for the stuff out in Whitehall, because this is not. And it's not going to work for the stuff up 29 in some ways. And it may not work for where I live over in Jack Jewett. But we got to craft something that's going to work along that. And I think, I agree with you, you said, we got to, we got to create that language. But it's not about, we have, we have every single supermarket you could possibly want in this community. Can't buy any men's clothes, but that's a different story. But we have, we have every supermarket that you could possibly want.
I really appreciate what you were saying there. And I think that what, it's very connected to what I was saying in the sense that the reason that that association of loss of service is there, too, is because when we build high density communities where lower income people are likely to live, they really do lack services. They really do lack access to green space and walkability. And so when people see those communities, they say, wow, we don't want that, right? So we've got to make sure from an equity standpoint that all communities have access to green space, as we said before. And so we can help break some of those associations between, you know, density and lack of service and then address some of these equity issues in terms that have been created by these policies.
If I might, these are great conversations. I just want to keep an eye on the clock. It's 5:15, we have 15 minutes left. We have three, two more questions, I think. Why don't we shift to the next page? And I don't want to cut anybody off. So we don't need to specifically address these. If you have other comments about things that are missing or not, just want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to chat about it. I would say it was helpful to reread the Connected and Accessible Community piece of the Equitable and Resilient Community document, because a lot of what you all are talking about, I think, is discussed in there. So if I might, maybe go to Commissioner Claiborne and then Commissioner Carazano, Commissioner Firehawk.
Sure. I'm really grateful for this rich discussion here. And I think what it also says is that as you're looking at climate action and equity, which are the two priorities of the board, they're not separate. Like, there's going to be moments of intersection and that's not to be taken lightly. And so even as we're doing these goals and objectives, I'm hoping to see some more, some more volume, I guess, in the words that are being used there to show that intersection. I think what's missing for me as an architect, and we're talking about development areas, seems relatively solid on like buildings to me. And so knowing that, you know, existing buildings, the stock continues to go up, is probably the most climate friendly design approach you can take. I would expect to see something in the goals and objectives in this chapter around buildings. I think we do good talking about transportation and various circulation networks, but the buildings piece, to me, is a glaring miss right now that I think we need to start looking at. And I'll just share a reference for you.
Oh, you're probably going to do it. No, I just was going to clarify the buildings piece and what you meant there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Design, materials, sustainable materials, things like that?
Exactly, right. And the impacts on climate action and equity, we're talking about buildings, since most of our buildings are happening in this development area. And then I'll share a resource, again, I think I mentioned it a few months ago, but it's American Institute of Architects Framework for Design Excellence, which you can just Google it, it's there. Informs progress toward a zero carbon, healthy, just, resilient, equitable built environment. So which, to me, is almost singing word for word exactly what's in all the data upfront from the board and what they're expecting to see. And they have 10 principles, and I'll just read them real quickly. Design for integration, equitable communities, ecosystems, water, economy, energy, well-being, resources, designing for change and designing for discovery. And so I think that might be a good just safety net to take a look at and see how we're connecting to those where possible and where it makes sense and is appropriate. So with that, I think I'm done with my comments. Mr. Chairman?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Because I know you have a great depth of knowledge in this. The last question, it talks about incentives. Are there, do you know of, or maybe we could look into as a county, incentives that are tied to sustainability that would help to encourage a higher intensity of uses? Is that, do you think there's something like that that exists?
I think there are funding sources. I think where I've done most of my work is mostly on the resilience side. And there's a ton of untapped capital out there. Like, you have to know how to navigate the system, but for, you know, mitigation and adaptation for resiliency. And you don't have to live at the beach to access that capital, right? Like, there's wildfires, there's floods and everything. And so I'm happy to connect you with some folks that I know to have that conversation as well when the county is ready for that, so.
Bishop, Carazano?
Well, so my comments, I still have some comments on the other two, but I think I can wrap them all, because they're all, they're all very similar. So they encompass things that I felt were, were missing. And I mentioned one, I'll mention it again, because I think it's, it's a key. And it layers into this idea of land use and transportation, right? They go hand in hand. So I'll just bring up again this idea of including, and it's probably more than one objective. I think you can put this objective in multiple locations. So this idea of, and I'll just, I'm not going to worth miss it for you, but I'll put the key components that I think need to be in there. So it's, it's objective to prioritize, sorry, to identify, prioritize and incorporate the highest priority projects into a capital improvement program. However you want to, you know, feel the word of it. The idea is, how do we begin to identify these, these projects? You know, where we're talking about equity. Well, that is going to take investments. I mean, all the things that we've been talking about here require some level of investment in order to implement them. So we got to be thinking about how that objective can then lead to those, to those investments and collaboration, right, across agencies potentially. I will also add to what I feel is, and so that's, you know, I think, goes into number one here to some degree. Then there's a step on, okay, what does that mean in terms of phase three? How do you actually begin to prioritize, using which tools? And we talked about, certainly, there's ways you can do that with your small area plans and begin to identify key areas with our transportation management plans and collaborating with our partners, the MPO and MPO Tech and so forth for the transportation piece. So the other, the other part that I feel is amiss, has been talked about here much more eloquently than I'm going to, is this issue of density and densification. So everything we do, since we're talking about having a limited, and over and over again, we keep saying 5% of our, of our land masses is in our, our growth area, right? We keep highlighting that, but at the same time, it is underbuilt. You guys are giving us statistics on how much we've actually underbuilt our development areas. Therefore, we have to do everything in the language that we put together to look at how we, I think we've used the terms here, adaptive reuse and infill and redevelopment. So all of that should be incorporated into our objectives. How do we incentivize all three of those? So that we can maximize our development area? Because why should we grow that when we're not fully utilizing what we have? And of course, the more we grow it, the more we have to extend our services, which we're having problems with the current area. That 5% isn't well served. So I don't even know that we can afford to go beyond that. So I think, how do we better utilize that? Some of the things that were talked about today, I absolutely agree with. Create more density in areas. So I do think there's a lot of room in here to continue to look at how we can, we can maximize density. And, let's see. So, okay, so the other piece associated with that, that I will bring in here, I guess this is more of a, the comment in page six, objective 1.7, policies to guide potential future development area expansion. That first paragraph, I'm having a lot of difficulty with, in the way it reads. And I'm just going to suggest that, that maybe you invert the way it's written and you start by, you start by saying, you know, under the current AC44 comp plan, an expansion was found not to be needed, you know. However, and then you can go to, if a development area expansion is found to be needed in the future, the following steps. So I think it's just kind of odd the way it's written, that's an aside. But then as you go down, it talks about the steps that you would take. And it suggests use factors related to location. I don't find a factor that's called location. There's probably a number of things that go to location. I'd suggest you put location such as, and the same thing for the next one, timing such as, so what are some of those examples that you would use in determining those factors? So I know that's maybe a little bit off of.
Are you talking about location or are you talking about proximity?
I'm talking about what, so if you go to, in page six.
No, I know, but are you leading towards, is it really about a location or is it really about a group of, a group of conditions that would lead themselves?
That's why I want the such as. I want them to tell what exactly they're talking about. Because when you, when you look at factors, they might, you might think about location, it would include all those things you're talking about. It could talk about proximity. So there are.
A group of services, a group of facilities, things like that.
Correct, because they're in, they would be in page seven and eight. So there is where they talk about the factors, right? You see there, seven and eight tells you the factors. There's none that says location by itself, but if you start talking about all this transportation, it says, you know, community facilities and services, I mean, all these things could be about location. And also, I think there's a typo up in the title. It says access and connection. Page seven and eight.
I think it was related to, you know, like access to services and also connections, like transportation connections.
It says assess.
Oh, assess, yes, like assess the infrastructure and feasibility.
I'll send you guys something.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely make some clarifications there.
Can I add a plus one just to your comments about that page? Just in the interest of time, so number, page number six, the last paragraph on that page, the consideration given to minor development area boundary changes. Feels a little bit like the camel's nose in a tent. Like, I'm not sure exactly what that actually means and how that's managed. So I could see a lot of people saying, well, this is right at the fringe, so I really think it should be expanded and we want to build more in this area. So I think just how that incremental growth outside of the development area is managed is really important.
Can I clarify that section as well? So I think that's a really good point to be more clear there. But in that case, we'd be talking about, like, off the top of my head, I can think of some neighborhoods that are mostly in the development areas and then just kind of how the boundaries were drawn. There's, you know, like five houses in the same neighborhood that fell just outside of that line. So kind of those cleanup things. And then also looking potentially at, you know, some of the schools that are, or public facilities that are on public water and sewer, adjacent to the development areas, but considered in the rural area. So that type of cleanup, not kind of individual requests.
That makes, that makes total sense. I don't know if I'm a developer reading this, it might be good to clarify that. And then it also shows up on the bottom of page seven again, under form, density and redevelopment, where it says beyond minor adjustments. So that was helpful, though, thank you. Good? Okay, we have, I don't want to rush you. So we do, we can extend into the post-public hearing as well if we need to, but I'll go to you.
All right, so you talked about, I'm just going to focus real quick on action steps. I mentioned this before, but we have some new staff. Haven't heard all of my, my speeches. So we're wasting a lot of land with surface parking. There's already been talk tonight about incentivizing stacked parking, but we should adopt parking maximums, not just minimums, because we are overbuilding our parking. We should, we should also consider, we have variable space sizing allowed, but bizarrely, it requires you make wider travel lanes so you don't get to use the space more efficiently. So our parking, our whole parking ordinance makes no sense. And then there's a lot of, this is about land use. There's, there are areas in the development area that don't have stormwater management because they're older. And we faced this in Charlottesville where people were doing infill, but it was just a paved space. If it's already paved and you're not paving it more, but you're just redeveloping it, you don't have to add stormwater management. You don't win, you never get ahead with your water quality. So we created a density bonus. If you did a certain number of low impact development best management practices, you got a bonus. And we did get some developers to develop it, to adopt it. And actually, that idea came from several architects in town, who had said, we'd do more green things if we could get a few more units to pay for them. So I think there's a lot of other incentives, like green lighting, which is having a planner, if you have enough minimum criteria of your green building, your green development, you get a faster review process. So you have to designate a staff person who is the green lighter, who, you know, like if you tick enough boxes, it goes into the faster pile. It doesn't mean you don't have the same level of review, but you reward them because time is money. So there are a lot of different incentives. Obviously, some of them cost a little bit of staff time to make them reality, but other incentives, like for transportation, giving people, if they, if they provide some kind of public transportation or more bus infrastructure, more bike infrastructure, they get other benefits, you know. So there's ways to incentivize all of these things. We did, we did this in Charlottesville, we reduced parking standards. We also did shared parking, where you had a business that closed at 5, an apartment building where they all came home from work at 5. We let them have one parking lot. It actually worked. So we can, we can start to be more creative if we want to use our urban ring, not like a suburban sprawly pattern, and start to adopt some more urban principles. We say all the right things in this document, but, you know, we need the steps to actualize it. So there could be, there's many more, but I'm not going to sit here and babble.
Well, I was going to suggest, I mean, I'm sure a lot. Well, I was going to suggest, I mean, I'm sure a lot of us have many more as well, and I would imagine you'd be willing to listen to us, maybe even on an individual basis if need be, right? So thank you. Thank you for all this hard work. I'm going to add two quick things. One is on your question relative to the Activity Centers Community Design Guidelines and Land Use Designations, that graphic. And maybe this is what you intended, but the last word says land use designations. First of all, I love the graphic. The recommended future land uses in general form and scale of development applied to each property in the development areas. I think I would also just apply this model to existing in some cases, right? I know it's future, but it's also interwoven into existing. So thinking about how design guidelines, Activity Centers all could be introduced to existing as well. And then the second thing I'll just mention is a general theme that comes up later, or actually throughout this, I guess, which is collaboration, local collaboration. And thinking about how we, as a planning commission, can collaborate with the city planning commission, how staff can collaborate. And Mr. Barnes and I have already started to talk through that, what might that look like? For example, transportation, right? Those things that sort of blend across the boundaries. So thinking about how we can make a maybe more pointed goal in several areas of collaboration would be helpful. So with that, thank you. Thanks, staff, fantastic job as always. I am going to put us into recess until 6 o'clock. And when we come back, we'll start with the public hearing and then we'll continue with the second topic on the work session following the public hearing. Good evening, everyone. I will call the February 13th, 2024 Planning Commission, Albemarle County Planning Commission to order, and I would like to establish a quorum. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Yes. Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Carrizano.
Here.
Mr. Missel.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bivens.
Here.
And Mr. Moore.
Here.
Great, and I will begin by opening up comments from the public on items not on the agenda this evening. Are there any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Okay. Great, thank you. We will move on then to the public hearing section, starting with and actually also ending with, we only have one this evening, SP 2023-11 and SP 2023-13, Service Dogs of Virginia. Staff, could we have your report, please?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see all of you again. My name is Sid Schuff. I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division of Albemarle County's Community Development Department. Tonight, I'll be giving staff's presentation on special use permits, SP 2023-11 and SP 2023-13, Service Dogs of Virginia. These are two special use permit requests, where the first is a request for a commercial kennel, and the second is a request for a private school on a 38.8 acre parcel in the rural areas. The subject property is located northeast of the city of Charlottesville, east of Stony Point. It is located on the south side of Turkey Sag Road, east of Stony Point Road, also known as State Route 20. The tax map parcel is 48-61D, and the entire parcel is approximately 38.8 acres. It is owned rural areas and is undeveloped. It does not have any subdivision history, and it appears to have all five of its original development rights. It is designated as Rural Area 1 of the Albemarle Comprehensive Plan. The surrounding properties are all zoned rural areas. The two properties to the southeast are maintained by the Service Dogs of Virginia Executive Director. The parcel to the south and west is a tree farm with no residences on the property. And across Turkey Sag Road to the north is a single-family residence. The site is wooded with a mixture of mature deciduous and evergreen trees that vary from 20 feet to 60 feet in height. The site is also hilly and contains critical slopes areas throughout the site. Additionally, the southern and southwestern portion of the site is designated as a mountain protection area, and that's shown as purple on this map. Lastly, there's a stream with a water protection ordinance buffer located along the frontage of the site on Turkey Sag Road. So for this application, the applicant is requesting two special use permits. The first is a private school dedicated to training service dogs and their recipients, and the second is a dog kennel needed to house the dogs in training. This is a screenshot of the concept plan that was provided as an attachment in the staff report. The applicant is limiting the clearing of existing vegetation and land disturbance to the construction of the driveway, parking lots, stormwater management facilities, and building pads, as shown in the lower and upper site building envelopes. None of the development will disturb critical slopes or mountain protection areas. The remainder of the 38.8 acre lot would maintain its wooded nature. The proposed lower site is approximately 1.3 acres and would contain the training and administrative building, parking, the client dorm, which would only house four clients at a time, and the puppy center, which would only be used to house new litters for eight weeks at a time. Additionally, the proposed upper side is 2.1 acres and would contain the caretaker residence, a kennel to house up to 20 dogs at a time, a small pool, a training facility, and a parking area. In sum, the applicant is proposing for six buildings to be developed on the site. All buildings will remain screened with the existing vegetation outside of the proposed clearing and land disturbance areas. The proposed buildings meet the required rural area setbacks in the ordinance. Additionally, the supplemental regulations for a commercial kennel require buildings to be at least 200 feet from any lot if they're soundproofed. The closest kennel building is the puppy center, which is located in the lower site, and it is soundproofed and 200 feet away from the closest lot line. Additionally, the kennel on the upper side is located 500 feet away from any lot lines. Lastly, the applicant has provided that all buildings on the site will be soundproof, regardless if it is a kennel or not. The special use permit application was reviewed under the factors for consideration as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes that the proposed special use permit will not be detrimental to adjacent parcels, will not change the character of the nearby area, will continue to be in harmony with the rural area zoning district, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. These are the conditions drafted by staff. The first is for the plan to be in general accord with the conceptual plan provided by Collins Engineering, and this includes the location of building envelopes, location of parking structures and facilities within the building envelopes, location of the entrance and access road. This also includes maximum height structures to not exceed 24 feet in height, perimeter fencing to be installed prior to commencement of the use, and lastly, all kennel buildings must be soundproofed. In sum, staff found this, found one factor favorable, and that is it's consistent with the review criteria for special use permits contained in the zoning ordinance. There is one factor that is unfavorable, and that is the proposed access is in the stream buffer. However, there are no other means of access to the site, and disturbance is limited to the minimum necessary. Staff recommends approval with the conditions as recommended in the staff report. With that being said, I'd like to open this up to any questions from the planning commission.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Schuff. Questions from the commission? Start down with Mr. Moore now.
I don't.
Mr. Bivens.
I just, I just have sort of two, one really question, and then another question, and I'm going to ask that one first. So there are two kennels, and so even though, and the two kennels, one for the puppies and then one for the adult dogs. So are we saying that when you have the special use permit for the kennels, are we including both of those in that special use, even though they're in separate locations?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. And then on this piece of property, could I run cattle or could I have horses? Could I, could I do horses? Could I do all the other kinds of things that I might want to do with big, big, non-domestic animals?
This property is zoned rural areas, so they're allowed to do whatever is allowed in the rural areas. So agriculture and forestal uses are allowed.
So I could just have really big animals there, he-hawing and all those kinds of things? I could have giant cattle, yes, I could have, yeah, I could, okay. I just, oh, I could? Okay, like on Barrick's Road, like the ones on Barrick's Road.
Can you go, Commissioner Murray?
Yes. In situations like this, where you do have crossings of the stream buffer and crossing of the stream, what are the design standards that we have for, for those crossings?
Yeah, so for the special use permit, this was sent out to all of our internal and external partners. They look at it from a higher level, and so engineering and Virginia Department of Transportation had no objections. If this were to be approved, it would be subject to a site plan as well as a water protection ordinance plan, and that's where engineering and Virginia Department of Transportation will really examine the impacts to the driveway and entrance.
Great. Commissioner McCleary? Commissioner McCleary, Carrizano? No. Awesome. Okay. Great. Let's open it up to the applicant. As you're coming up, just a quick word of instruction, you'll have 10 minutes to present, and when the light turns yellow, you'll have one minute remaining, so if you could wrap things up at that point, that would be great. Thank you and welcome. Please state your name and general location of residency.
My name is Peggy Law. I'm the Executive Director at Service Dogs of Virginia, and my property is the one that's next door on Turkey Sag Road.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to, to tell you a little bit about us. Oh, okay. Oh, thank you.
Keep talking.
Keep talking. I just wanted to spend a couple minutes and just tell you about our organization, just in case you're not familiar. We train dogs for people with disabilities in five primary areas. Physical assistance dogs provide extra hands for someone who's in a wheelchair. They do things like open doors, they pick up something that somebody drops, and much, much more. It's all right. The second program that we have is for autism, and these are dogs that help both children and young adults. For children, they interrupt repetitive behaviors, they keep children safer, they reduce anxiety. For young adults, they really help them with transitioning to a new phase of life. Medical Alert Dogs was a, is a third program that we do, and we train for people who have type 1 diabetes, who have very, have no control over their blood sugar, something called mass cell activation syndrome, which is, there is, the difference between the latter two things I'm going to explain is that there is no test that can be taken. So for blood sugar, you can prick your finger, you can know what your blood sugar is, even though our clients are people who don't feel it naturally. But with these other two, there's no way to know. So the dog is an incredible early warning system that can offset and prevent a crisis from happening. And that's true for the mass cell and also for adrenal insufficiency, of which we've had several clients. We train dogs for PTSD, for veterans, and for first responders. And finally, we train facility dogs for professional counselors to use in a clinical I know many people who live on our road have said, we love what you do, but we want you to do it somewhere else. I would maintain that this particular property is well-suited for what we want to do. Much of the terrain is steep, and it really isn't conducive to farming. When you asked about having large animals on it, it is all wooded currently. To, to clear it, I think, would present a big erosion problem because it is very steep. It really is, it's a mess right now. I mean, it's all overgrown, you're familiar with what those woods look like. There's nothing particularly attractive or nice about this, this parcel. I think that if, we chose it because it had the 500-foot setback. That was our goal in looking for property. And with the 39 acres, it's also the way that acreage is arranged, so that we can have the 500-feet setbacks from all directions. So that's why we chose it to begin with. We have stipulated that we're going to keep the property wooded, because that adds an extra sound buffer, and that is not something we would have to do, but we think that that will help address our neighbors' concerns. We have decided to, also to meet our neighbors' concerns, not put in foundations, but build the building on piers, so that there is less disturbance to the topography. And Eric, our architect, is going to talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. I know that people are worried about traffic. We're a staff of five, so, I mean, even if you could put in the requisite number of homes, we'd be less than if, if there were five different homes there. I envision the organization growing, and I could see us having a staff of 10. So it's always going to be a very small enterprise. I know people are worried about barking, and I understand that. I live in a rural neighborhood as well, and I get it, we don't want to hear barking dogs. This is not a commercial kennel. These are our dogs. They're, they're familiar with, with our routine and what we're doing, it would be very comfortable for them. Dogs that are not comfortable in the kennel would not be housed there, because they're not going to be successful as working dogs if they're miserable and they're barking. We need a new and dedicated space, because we're really hamstrung right now in the number of dogs that we can place annually. We're limited to having volunteers who can take dogs home at night, because we don't have a kennel, and it really, it really does make it very difficult. In a typical week, we also have people who house our dogs during the week, but they go away on vacation, or they're, you know, they're unavailable for a reason, and then we're scrambling to find a place to put a dog for the night. My poor admin person had to find homes for six dogs last week. It's just, it's, it's really a cumbersome way to do business. We don't currently have the space to raise a litter of puppies. We beg, borrow, and steal to be in people's homes. We were in Region 10 this past year. Purpose-bred and methodically enriched puppies have a greater success rate, and that means that we're going to use our donors' dollars and our time much, much more efficiently. So we really need to be able to, to develop our puppy center. Right now, we have one room, and so that is large enough for most of our needs. If we want to interview clients or train dogs, we can't do it at the same time. We have to use that one room for multiple purposes. So we're really, really limited on our space. And I think it would also just help our clients to be able to, to really develop more of a bond when they're leaning to work with their dog, if there was a, if they could be outdoors together some of the time. So in summary, I hope that you appreciate what we do and that we need a dedicated space to do it in, so we can be more efficient and more productive and be able to help more people. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Scott Collins. I'm a civil engineer on the site. I'm, we'll try to leave a couple minutes for the architect to talk, so I'm going to be real brief on what I have to say. Peggy and Sid said everything pretty excellent. I just want to reiterate a couple points. One, with the soundproofing, the requirement, the ordinance is 500 feet or soundproof in the buildings. We're doing both. So I think that's a huge thing that's, that they're proposing. As far as stormwater and runoff, we all know that everything's kind of draining from the mountain down to the road. There is a stream by the road. We're going to do, kind of localize stormwater quality, but quantity, we're probably going to look at something that's going to kind of attenuate that flow coming off the mountain to kind of help with some of the drainage issues that exist along that, along Turkey Sag Road. As far as our entrance, we're not crossing the stream for our entrance. The stream crosses the road. It's on the other side of the road where we're proposing our entrance. So we could put it on lower down, but we'd be crossing the stream, so we're not going to do that. We're going to put it, the entrance, where we don't have to cross the stream. So there is no stream crossing. We are a little bit in the buffer, but that's where the road is. And we are proposing perimeter buffers of 200 feet, wooded areas around the site, and 75 feet along the main corridor. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Ross and let him talk about the architecture, because it's really cool.
Great, thank you. When the light turns yellow, you got another extra minute, because it took a while to get the IT going.
Okay. So as we've talked about, we're proposing two building sites. We deliberately broke the buildings up into several smaller structures, residential in scale, in order to keep with the vernacular agrarian nature of the surrounding community. As Scott mentioned, we're proposing to essentially float the buildings on piers above the existing topography, so if there was a need to reverse the development in the future, we're not disturbing the natural condition of the ecosystem in the site. Five key points, as discussed, we're going to keep as much of the vegetation, so these are going to be residential-scale buildings in the woods, screened from the road and from the neighbors. We're proposing off-site construction as much as possible to minimize activity and waste produced on site. Vernacular materials, metal roofs, siding, materials that are found. Vernacular materials, metal roofs, siding, materials that are found throughout the community, timber frame, light wood framing, again, lifted above the ground on the piers as you see here. And then, and the hope is that in, once the development is in, they grow into the landscape and they're tucked away and really benefit the visual impact of the development, rather than clearing the site and putting one big building down on the, on the property.
Great, thank you. Perfect timing. Great, any questions from the Commission of the applicant? I'll start with Commissioner Firehawk.
No, it was very thorough application.
Great. No, none, all the way down? I just had a couple of quick questions. So you answered one of them, which was stormwater. I was just curious, are you planning, I think, I'm, forgive me, I didn't, I don't remember your name. The first speaker mentioned the possibility of looking for expansion and growing. Is that something that's built into this plan?
The facility's plan would accommodate the growth of the staff. She's more about adding more people to help in the future.
Got it. And then, I guess, just related, I'm curious as to the reason for the shape of the cleared areas. Are they defined or determined because of grading, or? Can't believe they're random. They look pretty intentionally shaped.
Yeah, pretty much. What you have is the, that upper, you have an upper campus and a lower campus. And both those are kind of set by not disturbing any of the critical slopes on the site and kind of having an access road that comes around that connects the upper into the lower. And those, both those areas are pretty flat areas, so they wouldn't have a whole lot of land disturbance associated with the campus-style buildings. And then when you start talking about putting buildings on piers and that, you just, there's just not a whole lot of land, overall grading and land disturbance. While we're showing a building, a building envelope, you know, we don't expect to sit there and clear out that area like you would, you know, with, you know, if you see a single-family lot, a house, or go in there, you know, they might clear out an acre, two acres, put a house in there. That's really not the case for this, for this proposed use. I mean, there is some parking associated with it, but we're looking at, that's why we're picking those flat areas as well.
Got it, thank you. That was it for me. Thanks. Well, if there's no other questions from the Commission, I'll open the public hearing. And I would also like to point out that not only have we, about 11 folks signed up tonight to speak, I just want to thank everyone for all the notes of support and other related notes for this application that have come to us over the last couple of weeks or so. And I would encourage you to feel free to speak. We'd love to have you speak. But also, if you agree with the person that just spoke, feel free to raise your hand and not have to come up to speak. If you're, we just don't have to hear a lot of duplicates because I think we're all pretty clear on what's been shared. So hopefully, that's understandable. And with that, I would also mention that you'll have three minutes to speak. Individuals cannot relinquish their three minutes to another speaker. And if there are any other written statements that you'd like, or if you've brought any with you, please give them to the clerk, and she'll share them with us. Thank you. So let's begin, and forgive me if I don't pronounce your name correctly. Rob Nellums, Niels?
Nellums.
Nellums. Should have stuck with what I...
Thank you for allowing us an opportunity to speak.
You're welcome.
I live on Turkey Sag Road, at 4545 Turkey Sag Road. One of the things I heard Ms. Law say, that it was a cumbersome way to do business, the way they're working now. And I think if you look at that picture up there, it says a lot. You look around it, and you don't see a lot of businesses. And you look around it, and you don't see seven buildings, the smallest of which is 3,000 square feet, some of which are 15,000 square feet, if I'm reading the legend correctly. And, and she also said that a lot of her neighbors, I being one of them, you know, very much appreciate the work that they do, but they just don't want it in this location because we do not believe that it fits the nature and tenor and harmony of the environment. And while I appreciate, coming from a construction background and a family that built things, the time and effort and the obvious expense that went into the preparation of this, I look around it, and I just, it just doesn't seem like it belongs here. I took a few moments in speaking to a Realtor friend of mine and did a little research on my own in Albemarle County in Orange. And I found a wealth of properties that were readily available, I assume in the approximate price range, and size that could have been, you know, equally available, equally considered. But that wasn't how it went down here. It was purchased, and then the provisions were sought to get a special-use permit. Nobody approached me about it, and I've lived there for a little over two years. I moved here from Southern California specifically to get away from businesses and an adjacent to the suburban-type neighborhoods I lived in. And then, less than two and a half years later, I find that that will not be the case. And it does disturb the harmony of the area. And if you look at the number of parking spaces, and this is the first we've heard about expanding it to maybe, you know, 10 employees or more, and there's parking for 30 vehicles there. It's a very narrow road. And it just doesn't seem like, if it needs that level of attention and maintenance, which it probably does, I think it needs to do it someplace else in an area that's, will be less impacted by it, and a road that is, you know, pretty narrow to begin with and not entirely paved all the way through. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Jeff Erickson? Henrickson? Not even close the first time, sorry.
No, it's all right. Don't worry. Nobody gets it right, so. Okay, three minutes. This is going to be difficult, but I'll do my best. Nobody doubts the benefit this organization has in general to the society. I think what they do is amazing. I love dogs. I have four of them, and I can't tell you, you know, the impact that dogs have had on my life. So I love the organization. But to me, the question here is not whether the total benefit, it's not what we're looking at, but whether or not the incremental benefit of having this at this location outweighs the incremental cost of having it at this location. The incremental cost of having it at this location, to me, because we live right adjacent on the other side, you can't quite see our place. If you live there, you understand that that valley, you can hear a pin drop. If one dog barks and then another, I hear it. I know they're talking about soundproofing and everything, and theory sounds great, but there is just no way you're going to put this scale of an operation up on that hill, and it's not going to be loud and disturb the peacefulness of the area. I promise you it will. They'll tell you that it won't, but it will. Okay, so what is the incremental benefit? I don't see it. This, if you go to the property, it is, they're going to put 50,000, over 50,000 square feet on the side of a forested mountain. Now, the engineers are going to tell you it's easy to do and all of this. Just go take a look at the property. I mean, it makes what Jefferson did at Monticello look modest. They're going to be carving this thing up, and I'm, is that the best benefit, you know, of use of resources for the kennel? I don't know. I mean, it seems to me the amount of money that is going to be spent to just get the ground available could be much better used if they found a more sensible location. So while I support the organization, I support what they do, this project just doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense in terms of the impact it will have on the community, stakeholders, but also just the amount of resources that are going to go into putting this thing in that location. And I really encourage you to drive out there and look at the property if you don't believe me. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Byts.
I got that exactly right.
Excellent.
And that never happens.
One for three.
One for three. Hi, I'm Lisa Byts. I'm the Executive Director of Region 10 Community Services Board. And in fact, we have a facility service dog that's placed with us through Service Dogs of Virginia. Her name is Maggie. She's working. She could not be here tonight. I wanted to talk about the impact of having a facility service dog on the people in our community. She's been with us since August of 2023. And in that time, Maggie has served more than 225 children and adults in our programs. She's been involved in more than 12 of our programs. She's responded to two critical incident events in the community. She's supported more than 200 staff, and she has improved both effectiveness and satisfaction outcomes for the people we serve when Maggie was involved in services. And she's improved staff morale. Only Maggie was able to do, to accomplish those things through the skills and abilities that she learned through the training the first two years of her life with Service Dogs of Virginia. She is not just a pet, and she's not just an animal who is a fur-faced friend for comfort. She, in fact, brings a sophisticated set of skills that improve outcomes, that decrease intense feelings and emotions, de-escalate trauma and problematic behaviors. And she does all of this through being present, through deep-pressure therapy, and other pieces and parts that happen in training. So although Maggie is fantastic, and if you're thinking, "That's amazing," you would be right, it's because of the training that happens at Service Dogs of Virginia. I want to say that Peggy spoke to the fact that they used our facilities for eight weeks, and it was a facility adjacent to our old Lynchburg Road campus. It did not disturb our parking, our programs, the surrounding community, and there was no disruption, no noise disruption. I do believe that Service Dogs of Virginia is not an organization that just raises trains and places service animals. What they do is they increase the health and well-being of our community through raising, training, and placing service dogs. And I think that having them in Albemarle County woven into the fabric of everyday life, being visible and present, and being part of our community, only improves both individuals, but also our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Neal?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak...
Sorry, I guess it's okay. I stated your name, but could you just...
Okay, yes, my name's Jessica Neal. I'm from Barbersville. Thank you for the opportunity to share a story about my son's journey with autism. His journey has been filled with challenges and triumphs, but one thing that has truly transformed our lives is our service dog, Forrest. Service Dogs of Virginia is the organization responsible for raising, training, and placing Forrest with us in 2017. Since Forrest came into our homes, Sam's life changed dramatically. His anxiety reduced, his meltdowns became easier to manage, and his existing therapies became much more effective. To put it simply, Forrest had a remarkable impact in a very short amount of time and became a bridge to greater independence and well-being for Sam. But Forrest's impact didn't end there. Their partnership had a ripple effect throughout our entire family. Sam's increased confidence and success meant that our whole family could participate in normal activities like trick-or-treating, visits to museums, athletic events, traveling in an airplane and RV, and most importantly, incredible family trip to Disney World in 2019. All of those things would never have been possible for us without Forrest's support. We have experienced firsthand how Service Dogs of Virginia provides life-changing services to individuals with autism and enhances their quality of life, empowering them to navigate the world with confidence and dignity. Therefore, I ask you to consider supporting the work that they do in enabling Service Dogs of Virginia to continue making a tangible difference in lives of families like mine who desperately rely on their services. And I would just say, as we talk about the expanded and opportunities to provide more dogs, that's a family like mine that are, completely have their lives changed. So every additional dog that Peggy can train and place with her families just changes lives in the whole entire Commonwealth. So thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you. Gavin Sherwood?
My name is Gavin Sherwood. I live in Chipman, Virginia, Nelson County. I've been associated with Service Dogs for probably about six years. I serve on the board of an organization which has been able to be a donor to Service Dogs. And we have been lucky enough to be able to do that on a very regular basis. On a more personal level, I also work with an organization at Wintergreen Resort, which provides ski instruction to people who have disabilities. I have seen the impact that the work that they do, whether it be through Service Dogs or another organization which does the same. Granted, our students come from a variety of locations. The impact that you see to have a five-year-old show up who's never done this before and is calm, cool, collected because of having that animal with them is amazing. And I simply ask that you, as a planning commission, consider to allow them to find a home here in Albemarle.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Polly Tarbell? And Megan Weeks will be next. You're on deck.
Good evening. I'm Polly Tarbell, Albemarle County resident, and I serve in the Board of Directors for Service Dogs of Virginia. For nine years, I served as a volunteer hosting service dogs in advanced training in my home. And that means I take them to school every day, bring them home. And I can attest, and I swear to you, and everyone I talk to is like, "They don't bark." They come home after a full day of training, these dogs do not bark. So neighborhood concerns of barking should not be an issue. I also know this organization has changed so many lives in unique ways with a less-than-ideal infrastructure. Currently, our Executive Director, this, this I did not email to you, but currently our Executive Director, Peggy Law, not today probably, but has recently taken home like four or five dogs at night. We can't continue this plan. We can't have a succeeding Executive Director take home dogs every night. We need a facility like very successful guide dog schools around the country, other service dog organizations around the country, where you can house the dogs in advanced training. They do not bark, they're exhausted, they've been bred for service work. So we really, really would appreciate your support on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Weeks? And then Peggy Law? Okay, I wondered. Robert Hackster would be following Ms. Weeks.
Good afternoon. My name is Megan Weeks, and I'm a Charlottesville...
Can you hold the microphone down a little closer to you? Thank you.
My name is Megan Weeks, and I'm a Charlottesville resident and a veteran of the United States Navy. I was diagnosed with post-traumatic stress disorder in 2016, following a dark period in my life. During this time, I found myself grappling with profound loneliness, emptiness, and despair. The debilitating flashbacks and overwhelming anxiety made it nearly impossible for me to step outside. I was desperate for help, and following the recommendation from a psychiatrist, I reached out to SDV. In 2019, my life changed when I got paired with my PTSD service dog, Moby. I am here today to support SDV and ask you to support their building plans. SDV specifically trained Moby to perform tasks to help mitigate my post-traumatic stress disorder symptoms. Moby wakes me up from nightmares, alerts me when an anxiety attack is about to come, performs deep-pressure therapy, and reminds me to take my medication. I still suffer from symptoms of PTSD, but with Moby's help, I can now live a more fulfilling and independent life. Without Moby and Service Dogs of Virginia, I would not be talking with you today. I would have taken my life. A dedicated training facility would mean more veterans would have the life-changing opportunity to receive a PTSD service dog. So to the members of Albemarle County Commission, Planning Commission, I'm sorry, I implore you to please support Service Dogs of Virginia's plan to build a dedicated training facility. And what I did not email you is that I also volunteer with SDV. I can assure you, I know that a lot of the issues are with the dogs barking. I, I would like to ask you guys to come and visit the dogs because they do not bark. When they are playing, they bark sometimes, but it would not be a nuisance. I can assure you that Peggy says what she means, and she would not cause disruption of the harmony of the streets of Turkey Sag. So I'm asking you to please support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Hack... Robert Hackster and looks like Walsh Jakwith is on deck.
Oh, we got a timer. All right. Hi, my name is Dr. Robert Hackster. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist. And before, I have a few prepared remarks, but I wanted to comment that I've been lucky enough to be affiliated with these folks for six years. And just to give you some perspective, we've heard some about, you know, easement and keeping woods up and soundproofing. For the last six years, they're operating out of strip malls. So you want to talk about having neighbors and people in close proximity, that's where they've been doing business. And in the six years that I've been working with them, you want to talk about neighbors, I haven't heard them complain because of the way that these people do business and the professionalism and the training of the dogs. So I wanted to say that first. I work with Service Dogs in Virginia primarily with two other programs. You think you hear Service Dogs, you think a lot about training. I wanted to kind of emphasize that a lot goes into that, to the placement decisions that are made for these dogs. I assist with the evaluation and selection of folks that are going to get dogs for either autism spectrum disorder or PTSD. And I guess I wanted to kind of call some attention to the fact that it's not just training the dogs, there's a considerable process that goes on with evaluation and selection of candidates. It's really important to find a candidate that is kind of in the right zone, right? They can't be so impaired that a dog would be cumbersome and overwhelming, and yet you don't want to place a dog with someone who doesn't need it, right? So a lot of effort and time and planning goes into the placements that these ladies make. I'm also lucky enough to have a facility dog. He's kind of, they call him my therapy dog. I work primarily with adolescent boys who, if you have one of those, you probably know they tend to be a little bit emotionally congested. And there is nothing more valuable, I have no more valuable tool than my facility dog. He does phenomenal work in terms of giving them a sense of comfort and confidence in being able to express themselves in a safe environment. And the last thing I'll say is that this organization is truly run by a group of, a small and dedicated group of ladies who really don't ask for much more than the opportunity to show the community what these dogs can do. And it's all always about given, giving. This isn't a business. This is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to give. And in the six years that I've been affiliated with them, I have seen nothing but giving to the community. The work that they do is wonderful. This is an organization that will give back to you if you grant them their permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Walsh Jakwith and then Marty Silverman.
I am Waldo Jakwith with the bad handwriting. Good evening. Good to see a few folks here I haven't seen in a while. I live in the Ryland and Magisterial District where I live next door to Peggy Law, Executive Director of Service Dogs of Virginia. I live there with my family. We're on the map there. I'm here to suggest that some limitations be attached to this special use permit. I know that many of our neighbors are additionally concerned about potential future uses of this property. After our equal protection demands, that if a special use permit is granted for Service Dogs of Virginia to operate a kennel on that parcel, then anybody must be granted to operate a kennel on that parcel in the future. Future kennel operators may not be as good a neighbor as Service Dogs of Virginia has been. Peggy Law has had Service Dogs on that property for, I've been on Turkey Sag for 20 years. We haven't had any trouble so far. But here are the limitations that I propose with no understanding of what limitations it is appropriate for you to encumber the permit with. All of these limitations are taken directly from Service Dogs of Virginia's proposal. Nothing that I suggest here would limit their stated plans. Kennel use cannot be fee-for-service. Education cannot be fee-for-service. Lodging cannot be fee-for-service. No more than 20 dogs may be housed on-site at one time. No more than 10 staff members and volunteers may work on-site at one time. No more than five people, four guests and one caretaker may be lodged on-site at one time. Lodging services may not be provided to guests for more than a total of 50 days per calendar year. Lodging services may only be provided Monday through Friday. The hours of operation for everybody but the caretaker would be restricted from 7:00 AM to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And buildings must be removed if Service Dogs of Virginia terminates use of the property and transfers ownership of it. And I know that last one is like an extraordinary thing, except that's what they proposed to do in considerable detail in their application. I love them. You know, constructing the buildings to optimize for removal is absolutely remarkable and impressive. Again, all of these limitations that I suggest here are limitations that Service Dogs of Virginia are committed to holding themselves to in their application, although I propose there's some limitations here that are somewhat more liberal. So I propose that we let Service Dogs of Virginia operate unfettered precisely as they intend to, but to ensure that no future organizational leadership can engage in activities beyond those proposed without receiving an additional special use permit, and to ensure that no future owner of the property can use it to engage in activities other than those planned by Service Dogs of Virginia, specifically the small-scale, not-for-profit training of service dogs, which is very different than running a kennel or running a school. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marty Silverman. I live in the Whitehall District and I'm a volunteer for SDV. I think it was pretty clear how wonderful this organization is. So I won't dwell on that, only to say I want everyone to be aware that SDV has the highest level of accreditation, internationally accredited. It's the only service dog agency in the state that trains medical alert dogs. So this is not just a hobby or just a run-of-the-mill service dog agency. This agency is really special and it's run by someone who's very special. And I think they tried to make clear in the proposal that they want to be good neighbors. This is an organization that is seriously committed to not only the people they serve but our community. So I just want to emphasize that. I think you heard enough that the dogs don't bark. Dogs bark, but these dogs bark exceedingly rarely. I've been a volunteer with service dog agencies for five years, have raised four dogs, two from puppyhood and two as adolescents. And it really is just miraculous. I know, very understandably, neighbors are concerned and it's hard to reassure them other than to say it's, these dogs don't bark. And I would invite you all to come down to Service Dogs and see what goes on down there. And there'll be a dozen dogs milling about in offices and just, they're miraculously calm. The other issue is traffic. And again, I live in a rural area, I'm equally concerned about traffic. Just to clarify, the proposal includes the total build-out. So one of the neighbors expressed concern about there'd be an additional people, this is the total build-out of the facility. So again, just to allay everybody's fears, they're going to be great neighbors. I wouldn't be surprised if several neighbors ended up being volunteers for the agency. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So I've gone through my list. I just wanted to open it up for anyone else in the audience who would like to speak. If you could come up, please, and state your name and general location of residence. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought I was on the list. My name is Jan Oldenburg. I'm the Chair of the Board of Service Dogs of Virginia. I actually live in Midlothian but commit to this organization and its work. I think you've heard a lot about the organization and what we're doing, but I want to emphasize a couple of things. One, we are a nonprofit. People do not pay for their dogs. We raise the money in order to be able to provide the dogs free of charge. We invest generally two and a half years in the training and then we keep a continuing relationship with the clients we place them with. So it's a long-term commitment on all of our parts. I also want to note that this parcel is actually the result of a long search process on our part. And this fits our needs very well. We have done a lot of work, the team has done a lot of work to make sure we maximize the use of the property and of our resources in building out the property. And again, we're always going to be a small-scale operation, but the build-out is essential for us, not just to continue our mission, but to enhance and provide more options for people. You've heard the stories. We not only provide that one-on-one support, but it has a halo effect in terms of the families and in the facilities we serve. We actually have a multiplier effect in our impact on the community. We have a very strong board. We have strong and committed staff. We have community volunteers who are committed to this agency and spend endless hours on it. And we've got a very strong set of donors. So I urge you, on behalf of the Board of the Service Dogs of Virginia, to commit to this proposal and support the ongoing work. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw another hand.
Thank you. My name is Beth Quitrara. I am a volunteer with Service Dogs of Virginia and I live in the Montgomery Ridge neighborhood. And I say that because it's a small neighborhood and I think that's important as we talk about the impact, and I absolutely respect the concern that these dogs may have in a neighborhood. I've been a volunteer with Service Dogs for four years now. And over those four years, I've been a puppy raiser, I've been a nights and weekends volunteer, and I've been a respite caregiver. I've had up to four dogs in my house at any point in time. And my neighbors never complain. In fact, it's the contrary. My neighbors come in and say, I can't believe there's four dogs in this house and it's so quiet. I take the dogs for walks in the neighborhood and my neighbors stop. They want to meet the dog, they want to know their names, they want to hear the story. What's this dog being trained as? You know, a diabetic alert dog. They, it brings joy to my neighbors, quite frankly. And to that end, some of my neighbors have become donors and supporters of these dogs. You know, then they want to follow up on the dogs, they want to know where they've gone and what's happened. And I believe that's the reality because Service Dogs literally trains these dogs from the day they're born. As Lisa just noted, a litter was recently born. And with that litter, many volunteers, as well as the trainers and the staff, worked very carefully every single day to make sure that these dogs are going to be calm and confident. We introduce them to stressors, to smells and sounds that might otherwise startle other dogs. And we do this on day one so that they aren't barking at doorbells or trucks or garbage cans. We start to introduce that all on day one to these dogs. And so they really are confident dogs. They're not your average dog. And I just want to say, I don't believe it would adversely impact the neighborhood in terms of the sound that these dogs may potentially make. I also just want to echo what a contribution it makes to the community. There are people working in our community, contributing to our community because Service Dogs is providing these individual dogs, individuals with dogs that allows them to actively participate and be members of this county and this state. I just hope you'll consider all of that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to this? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, anybody online?
I have one.
One?
I have two.
Okay.
Greg, please unmute yourself, your name and general location, and you will have three minutes to make your comments. You can start now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Greg Wissiger. I live in Midlothian as well. I am the owner of the tree farm to the west and south of the proposed Service Dogs of Virginia location. I personally have no problem with Service Dogs of Virginia. I have no problem with the traffic. It's going to be no more than a typical day of commuters to Peters Mountain, for example. I am concerned about the scope of the construction. Fifty thousand square feet of space comparable to the public land store on Fifth Street, I think is excessive. I don't know what a reasonable size would be, but putting a Target store on the side of the Southwest Mountain historical area, I think is a little bit excessive. So if, within the limitations, you could scale back to a reasonable square footage, I'd have no objection.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rami. Rami? Rami, please state your name and location, and you have three minutes as soon as you start talking.
Hi there. Thank you, thank you for your time. My name is Rami Steinrock. You are close with my name. And I live in Montgomery County. I'm joining you from Virginia Tech this evening. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist and a certified animal-assisted intervention specialist. I submitted my statements online, but I'll speak off the cuff for just a moment. I'm placed with a five-year-old Labrador named Josie who works with me every day at the Cook Counseling Center at Virginia Tech. Together, we carry a full caseload of individual and group therapy as well as serving outreach to 35,000 students at Virginia Tech. I will say, I have heard Josie bark, but like that is far louder than Josie is. I just wanted to, one of the things that has emerged is some of the uses, one of the things that people have talked about today is what this face will be used for, things like that. And I'll say that when Josie was placed with me about three years ago, I was very fortunate because I had, I had the fortune of having professional development dollars from Virginia Tech that helped me be placed with Josie. And so I was able to stay in a hotel for the week. Now, if Service Dogs of Virginia has the opportunity to have people who are being placed with their dog come and stay at the facility while they're being placed with their dog when they come for like refresher training, things like that, it's going to make an awful big difference in the lives of people with disabilities who may not have the resources that I'm afforded in my professional role that I use Josie, that Josie is paired with me for. So I just wanted to add that. I have other prepared remarks that I've submitted so the commission can see those. But please just know that Service Dogs of Virginia is a really special organization. They are, it's been said a bunch of times already here, but they're incredibly caring, loving, professional. Not only do they care an awful lot about the clients that they serve, but they care a lot about how the dogs are placed and trained. They want to see that the dogs are going to places where they can work. Josie knows her job, she knows what she's doing, and she's honored and valued for the work that she does. So I thank you all for your consideration and considering making this great contribution to what these dogs can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
Lee Silver, please unmute yourself, state your name, and maybe they change their mind and they don't want to speak.
My name is Lee Silver. I live on St. Edward Road. And I've been listening to everyone talk about how great the organization is, and we all agree. The only issue is, is that that isn't even close to what we're here to talk about. This is a special use permit, and there's nothing special about what this organization is proposing. While it might be nonprofit, it's a commercial operation. We didn't sign up for a commercial operation when we all moved out to the country. There is no reason to have this built on this particular lot. There was a board member who said it was an exhaustive search. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I find that very hard to believe that after an exhaustive search, the only reasonable place to have a kennel is right next door to the executive director. I further state that the gentleman who owns the tree farm had indicated to me that they approached him about buying his property to have this kennel, thus reinforcing the reason to get a special use permit in this idyllic neighborhood is because it's close to the executive director's house and makes for convenience for the organization. Again, 12 speakers tell us what a great organization- Again, 12 speakers tell us what a great organization is. No one's arguing, not even the homeowners. No one is arguing with the dogs how great a service they provide. What we're arguing about is the residents' rights to have their peace, their quiet, their idyllic atmosphere that we created and that was given to us and proposed to us as part of our purchase of our property. We don't need this organization, this facility, in this spot. I think what the gentleman who first spoke about having a real estate agent and looking and finding other properties is that there are other commercial properties, ones I might even donate to helping them buy and/or have operations at. But it doesn't need to be on the side of this mountain. I respectfully ask you to reject their application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it. Okay, great. First of all, I just want to thank everybody for your sincere feedback and comments, especially some that are profoundly personal. So thank you for that. And I would like to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to some of the comments that have been raised.
I'd like to ask Karen, if you could.
One point we wanted to address, the square footages on the application are max requested. We're not proposing to build 50,000 square feet of building.
Can you please state your name again?
Eric Ross.
Thank you.
I'm the architect, resident of Almar County. The buildings that are shown on the plan encompass about 15,000 to 20,000 square feet as we've currently designed it. So it's not going to be the size of public lands or a Target.
I appreciate that some of the neighbors think that it's just to make my life convenient that the parcel next door is the one purchased, or that that's why I asked Mr. Weisenger about his parcel. It's because I was looking so hard to try to find a place that I knew that the parcel next to me was vacant. I knew that Mr. Weisenger had nothing on his land. I've called a lot of owners, people that I knew that had empty spaces to see if they would be interested in selling to us. So it was my dogged, no pun intended, pursuit of trying to find a reasonable place, and I just knew because I live next door. I will be retiring in a number of years. I'm an old person now, and it's not going to benefit me in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other responses from the applicant? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion. Who would like to kick us off? Ms. Firehawk, would you like to?
Yes, thank you. I actually was, I will say that, just for the public, just to be aware, we are approving or not approving, however it goes, a use that runs with the land, and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't apply to this particular organization. So if we approved it as a kennel, then someone else can come and operate a kennel there in the future. So just to be clear, like, their dogs are awesome and well behaved, but we can't assume that all future dogs will, that would ever be there in the future, would behave the same way. So I was curious to ask our counselor if, you know, we had a suggestion about limiting the use of the lodging and such, you know, trying to add conditions that would apply to future kennel users. And so, for example, you know, could one put a condition on that said, because they have lodging as part of their operation, as part of the site conceptual plan for the people learning to train with their dogs, could you say something like lodging could only be used for clients of Service Dogs of Virginia? Or it would not be possible because it would just be like, there's lodging there, and a future kennel could also have lodging there for whomever?
Right. And so as you indicated, such special use permit would run with the land, so to make owner-specific provisions probably would not be enabled specifically. It couldn't be made to be a special use permit specific to a particular owner. So for example, the county would not be enabled to say that this special use permit would expire upon transfer of the property, for instance. What you're suggesting may be a little more in a gray area in terms of, can a condition be imposed that says only clients of Service Dogs of Virginia can be housed here? Again, that would be ambiguous. Or I should say, the enabling authority for that isn't entirely clear.
Okay, but we could do things like limit the number of dogs, limit the hours, limit the whether or not people would be able to stay there on the weekend, although I wonder about that one because maybe that's the only time someone is available to stay there is on their weekend.
The conditions should be tailored so that they can run with the land and not be specific to any particular owner.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Carazana?
Just following that trend, that thought, I mean, if limiting the number of dogs, when this is a small operation, a very specific niche that they're servicing, a kennel needs to operate with certain volume. So that may be a way to avoid the.
Whatever kennel being too impactful, whether it's them or someone else down the road. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Claiborne?
I'm in concurrence with my other commissioners thus far. I do want to say that there are rules and regulations and buffers and setbacks that are put in place for a reason, right? So I don't want to paint a picture for the public that folks are going willy-nilly and do what they want with their land. There are protections there because any use can come to any piece of land that's zoned appropriately, or if you need a special use permit for that. So I think we're working within great parameters that we have here, so.
Great. Commissioner Murray?
So a question, since this is both a kennel and lodging, is it conceivable that someone could come by after this and propose, once this is over, to just have straight-up lodging there?
So let me clarify, this isn't lodging in the sense of the zoning ordinance. This is under special use permit for a private school and a commercial kennel. Those are the two types of uses under the zoning ordinances. So lodging may be a sort of a vernacular term that's used for housing dogs, but under the zoning ordinance, housing dogs equals a commercial kennel.
Okay, so let me amend that. Someone could come by and propose a private school, and that would, that would apply?
So if this special use permit were granted, there would be authorization to have a private school, but only with the conditions included on the special use permit?
Only for dog students.
Great, I'm sorry, Commissioner Vivens?
So Chair, I'm reminded of the number of private schools which this committee has been lifted out of its seat with joy to approve. And so I am feeling a bit sort of, sort of, like, this is, we're wagging the tail on this particular one and trying to make this group of individuals apply and comply with things that we've not done, when we've had young boys running around screaming on pitches and kicking balls at each other, as I'm sure they do at those little schools. And we've been joyful about all of that. So therefore, Chair, I would just like this piece to go forward without any of the conditions that we're trying to wrangle it into.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
I don't personally live in a rural area, but I do enjoy them and have been thinking a lot on the planning commission as we consider proposals of what rural area parcels do, right? And they, we emphasize agriculture and civil culture. We emphasize making things for people to use, right? Making things for people to benefit their lives in some way, whether it's food or sustenance or companion animals in this case. And there's a lot of uses that are by right on these rural areas. This one is maybe just an edge further, but I think of 20 quiet dogs as opposed to 20 roosters, that we wouldn't even be here because they're allowed by right. So, you know, I don't think it's a big issue. One thing I noticed was not listed in the by right uses of rural areas is, by right is not, does not include idyllic, peaceful, unchanging other properties. There are guidelines on decibels and things like that. That's what the by right is. And so, yeah, I think it's a use that makes sense for the time and space where it exists.
Chair?
Sir? I'm going to come to this later on when we do the other piece, but someone mentioned Peter's Mountain up there, which I'm sure everybody now knows is an installation that has of some note, that probably would get pressed, and now when we have, where the Hannah Station on the other side of that road could get pressed into use if conditions present themselves in an unfortunate way across the globe. And so there would be enough traffic on that road that would make everyone's hair stand up if something were to go drastically wrong in the world right now, of which these dogs would not be one of them.
Thank you. Any other before I, yes?
I had another question. Again, thinking about conditions. So one of the things I liked about this proposal was that the use of footers to limit the amount of clearing and grading, because that is something that comes into my consideration is how much, how impactful will this use be on this particular parcel? But what I want to know is, so assuming that I'm saying I like the building construction and the lack of clearing as from their narrative, is it possible to then say, okay, we're approving this kennel with this conceptual plan and this building structure? I mean, you know, because someone else could come in and build a kennel, and they could grade the heck out of it, you know, and put very different buildings up there in the future. So is that something that we can, because that factors into my liking this proposal is the minimalist impact of the building design?
Right. And the conditions is currently drafted by staff, just deal with the location of the properties rather than whether they're sighted off the ground, the type of construction that's affected. I imagine the construction would be addressed at the site planning stage. If the commission were interested in dictating the type of construction, there'd have to be some connection or nexus between the land use impact and the type of building construction. So for instance, as you probably know, there are already special conditions, or I should say, under the zoning ordinance, there are performance standards that require soundproofing or certain distances. Those would be the types of conditions that the planning commission should be considering, conditions to limit discernible impacts of the proposed use.
Okay, I guess, yeah, I mean, the building construction is not related to the dogs except for the soundproofing part, but it is a more intensive use potentially of the site. And so it seems to me like the building construction would be part of that consideration? That's a question.
Well, and certainly that's an argument that could be made.
Okay.
But I would argue, I wouldn't argue, I'm not, this is not an argument.
Not debating.
But I would offer as an observation that if someone were to go and put a horse farm there and not use this construction, which I'm actually very excited to see someone in our county using this construction, we've talked about it for a number of years, and so it's kind of interesting to see it being built, that if they were to come there and want to stable horses there, which they could do by right right now, or to put my long-horned cattle there, they could do that by right. And the facility to hold them would necessarily, probably not be something like this. It would be something that had to clear some land in order to put a barn or a set of stables up there. So I just, I would, I would not want us to put an additional level of burden on an organization that if it was just a different animal, they could create housing that would be completely different and have more, and have, and move more of the mountain than this, than this use looks like it will use, it will do.
I would just also add that I went to revisit some of the staff report, and Section 5.1.11, I think provides some really solid guardrails also in terms of time of, bless you, time of use that's allowed, as well as decibels that's allowed and so forth. So I think I'm in agreement with no additional conditions. I don't see the need for that after I read that.
Could I, could I just clarify that the 5.1.11, those are default provisions of the zoning ordinance? Those aren't additional conditions of the, of this particular special use permit. Those would be required of any commercial kennel approved under a special use permit in the rural areas.
Thank you. So essentially, if a future kennel came there, you have to apply to 5.1.
Any commercial kennel receiving a special use permit in the rural areas is subject to 5.1.11.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I had a couple of comments, but any other comments? Okay, just a couple of thoughts, not to restate what's already been stated, because I agree with a lot of it. Just as a reminder, what I'm trying to focus on is, you know, the fact that obviously this is missionally an incredibly outstanding group that is making and changing lives. And so that aside, our role is to serve as advisory board to the, advisory body to the board to promote the orderly development of the county and its environs to accomplish the planning, zoning, and land subdivision and development objectives that set forth in state law and Almar County Code. That's our charge. That's what we do up here. And so we recommend or recommend denial or recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. I think you all know that, but just as a reminder, that's our charge. So when I look at this personally and thinking about what a lot of my colleagues have said, I, I think about the impact visually and the buffers that have been built into this application. And one of the things that's a bit of a challenge for me to figure out, but I don't, I would ask the question of the architects or the engineers if it really would change my mind. But the visibility, the site section number one, you know, the visibility from the road is, it looks like it's wide open and very visible from that site section, which I know it's not, right? It's actually just a cut through. And so, in my opinion, there's a substantial buffer that then ties directly to the special use permit that is a condition of the approval, which is that any development be in general accord with the concept plan. And so that's one of the parameters, I think Commissioner Claiborne spoke about. And the other thing is that, and that includes the limits to the clearing and the limits to the, you know, all of the improvements on there. So, you know, I'll just say that's one of the things in my, in my decision, in my thinking, I guess. The other is the comment about what we've seen and approved in terms of private schools. And, and that's, you know, just thinking sort of, I know everything, every application stands on its own, but I think that is part of the context of Almar County that we have to be thinking about. And so I'm inclined to support the application as stated in the staff report. So with that, I'll ask, is there a motion that anybody would like to make?
I'm willing to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of SP 2023-00011 and SP 2023-0013, Service Dogs of Virginia with conditions as recommended in the staff report.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Could we have the roll, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Vivens?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your time and attendance. All right, with that, we will move on to continuation of our work session from 4:00 today. And I was about to ask, would anybody like to take a break? Why don't we recess for five minutes and return back, let's say, let's return back 13th, now, now we're live, to the February 13th Planning Commission meeting. And we are now tackling the second half of our work session, which is community facilities. And I will turn it back over to Ms. Kenealopoulos.
Thank you, and good evening, commissioners. My name is Tori Kenealopoulos. I'm a principal planner in the Community Development Department. And just as a quick reminder to those listening in, this is a continuation of the work session on draft goals and objectives for the comprehensive plan that was started at 4:00 p.m. today. So we will move into our second and final topic, which is community facilities. So throughout the engagement process during AC44, this is a summary of the community input themes that we've heard related to community facilities. a summary of the community input themes that we've heard related to community facilities. That includes infrastructure should keep up with growth, including schools and transportation, a need for improved broadband and wireless coverage in the county, support for utility-scale solar, but also a need for guidance for placement and appropriate locations, a need for more libraries, a concern that we should address areas that have failing septic systems, and that we need to increase community resilience to climate change and natural hazards. So there are four goals for this chapter. The first is related to public facilities, infrastructure, and services to provide overarching guidance. The second is related to renewable energy. The third is related to communications, electric, and private utilities. And the fourth is focused on community resilience. And once again, I'm going to skip through the draft goals and objectives, but I can return to any of those slides if it's helpful during the discussion to pull up any of the specific language. So again, we have the following two overarching questions for the commission to consider, which is, are the draft goals aligned with the AC44 framework for an equitable and resilient community, and what is missing from the draft goals and objectives? And then we also have the following questions for the commission that are more specific to the draft objectives. First is, does the commission support objective 1.4 to provide public water and sewer service to some legacy zoning areas in the rural area? And does the commission support developing a location policy for utility-scale solar in the rural area based on the considerations under land use goal two? And if there's anything else that we should consider under goal two that we did not already consider? And the reason that we are asking these questions specifically is these are the areas of community facilities that would be more of a significant change to the 2015 plan compared to the rest of the recommendations. So with that, happy to turn it over to the commission for questions and discussion. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that last statement, too. That was helpful to frame it compared to the 2015 plan. All right, any questions of staff? Just general questions before we get into the meat of the discussion? Commissioner Firehawk, no, no worries.
My, my tablet just went dead. So I have, I have.
You need a plug?
I did write, yeah. Well, if anyone has a tablet plugged, that'd be great. But I did write something down. So this is about anything in the chapter, or?
Just in general, yeah, just general, broad overarching questions?
I think I have more specific things, so I'll just skip for now.
Great.
Oh, I'm saying I don't, mine are more specific, so not broad things.
Okay, any general questions?
I did have a general question. This had to do with the, oh, sorry. I do have a general question before we get into some other. It struck me that the time, the response time, we talk about services, emergency services in particular, and I had it here, get exactly what page it's at, but so it's eight minutes per inside the development area and 21 minutes in the rural area.
You mean for all response?
Yeah.
No, that's not true. I mean, is that the goal?
Well, that's what I, that's what I saw on the, on the report as, as kind of the measure of are, do you need an additional facility because you're beyond those parameters? And it just seemed excessive to me.
You're referring to page 15 to give your.
Thank you.
And excessive how?
21 minutes just seemed like, I just want, is that, is that the measure? Is that, you know, based on?
For fire rescue it is, based on their standards of cover, which the Board of Supervisors adopted in 2019. And so that's for the development areas, eight minutes or less 90% of the time. And then for the rural area, 21 minutes or less 90% of the time.
I just wondered if that was a standard that?
It's a goal, but it's not a fact. Because we have 45-minute response times.
Were you right?
Yes. Forty-five minutes minimum.
So it's even worse.
Yeah, it's bad.
Yeah, that just struck me. I thought it was a long time to, 21 minutes.
Just remember, part of the way that the rural area is kind of structured works is a service provision. At times, you know, to meet a higher one, you'd have to have a lot more stations covering an area and.
Great.
Of course, it comes back to the factor of, you know, the rural area, the amount of development that you're allowing out in the rural area, too, and paying for those increased service times to cover that. Kind of a trade-off.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Claiborne?
No general questions.
Commissioner Murray?
I'm good.
Commissioner Bivins?
I'm just pleased to see that we're talking about redundancy, sort of how do we deal with sort of natural disasters? And, and so I think more conversation, maybe not here, but at some point, as you're looking at plans, because I do believe if we're looking at climate, climate and, climate catastrophes, the whole idea, and we've talked a little bit about this, about climate migrate, migration, because of things that may be going down in the Virginia Beach or the ocean sort of place. And then I just naturally need to say, as we've made investments in, in, in activities that have a more protection of the, of the country activities connected to it, Ravanna Station, when I mentioned the Peters Mountain, I can imagine at some point that this could easily be a, a target. And so being able to figure out how, as a county, we sort of respond and prepare ourselves if something on 29 North becomes a target. How do we respond to that? Because with this investment becomes also an indication that people will become aware of the things that are going on there. And I think that's part of, if you start talking about this, I think that's part of it. And there's some other pieces that I can speak more passion, not immediate, with an immediate passion, too, when we come to the second set of questions.
Got it, thank you. Commissioner Moore?
No particular questions. It's more of a, a lot of it's just be responsible, do good work, carry forward with the kind of path we've been on, it looks like. But I know there's some specifics we'll get into.
Got it, thanks. I had one general question, if you could kind of give us a little bit of insight. I think it's on page 10 where it talks about the community facilities and services in the county. And then the first paragraph is the following sections provide an overview of the county's community facilities and some of its services. The AC44 team will continue to coordinate with staff from these community facilities. So that's public water and sewer, schools, fire and rescue, et cetera. Can you give us a little bit of an idea of how you all do communicate about these and how some of the input you might have received from them was baked into this document?
Sure. So we've been, you know, coordinating with them throughout the process, and that includes, you know, setting up specific meetings with each group, like a meeting with schools. You know, usually we meet with, you know, some of the service providers together, like ACSA and RWSA, and checking in on, you know, challenges that they're trying to address, sharing community input that we've been hearing so that they can also incorporate that, and then collaboratively writing the goals and objectives. And then also, you know, as we make edits, sharing them back with them, kind of an iterative update process. So they've been very much involved in, in writing the objectives and starting to, you know, share some possible ideas for, for action steps. So keeping that kind of future process in mind for what some of their needs might be.
Great, that was my suspicion. I figured you were probably co-writing these and communicating on them, but that's very helpful, thank you. All right, why don't we go to the specific questions? Do you want to go back one slide, please? And we'll ask that general question, are the draft goals aligned with the AC44 framework for an equitable and resilient community? Any thoughts on that? Start at this end, Commissioner Moore?
Again, I think, you know, it's like, it's sort of, a lot of it's the responsible continuation of, of good work that seems to be in place. You know, smart planning and, and, you know, the word sort of equitable access, accessible, community-oriented is in all the sub-goals about libraries and public schools and emergency services and so on. I would say it certainly seems so. I mean, yes or no questions invite, I guess, more, you know, just pontification, but I'd say, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're good at that, go ahead.
You go ahead.
You go ahead, you're good at that.
No filibusters.
No, no, we're not staying here until 5:00 in the morning.
Exactly.
To vote on this.
Exactly, right.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Bivins?
So, you know, I will, I will give you some notes that I made because there's some things that I just don't understand, but I, but I really want to save my, my sermon for the public water and sewer piece.
All right.
Okay, but there are, you know, there are some, there are some bits there like I didn't realize. Like I would ask you to, to look at the school map because I think there's some, there's some remapping that needs to be there. You know, the one thing that I will say is we do not have two vocational schools. We don't, we're not in the one, we're no longer part of K-Tech, they bought us out. And Center One is not vocational. I think they would, while it has more sort of project-based learning, it's not a vocational school. And I, and so there's some things like that. I also ask, we talked about it before, and I see it's here, I would be hard-pressed to find a community center in the development area. In fact, I don't even know where, I saw them roller skating down there at Yancey and thought, where would that happen? A, where would it happen in the development area?
Yeah.
And B, would anybody know how to get to a place? So the whole idea of the being, when you talk about those kinds of centers, where, where would they roll out in the development area if we were to sort of do things like that?
We'll taff into the parks we talked about.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, skate night, yeah. Commissioner Murray?
I would say generally so, in terms of being aligned for, for equitable and resilient community, I would say that I would be cautious when we're getting to talking about extending services to the rural area, that there, that, that it comes at the cost, in many ways, of being less resilient. We are, we're effectively, could be spreading ourselves too thin if we were extending water and services out further. That means we're doing less to maintain the services that we have in our growth areas. That would be my only concern there.
Commissioner Claiborne? Thank you.
Sorry, I flagged 1.9, and I was curious if we could talk a little bit about, what does that really mean, like drilling down into that? So it says, provide facilities, let me pull it back up, that enable Almarl County public school students to have high-quality, equitable, dot, 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 dot. Is that implying that we have inadequate facilities now? I'm just curious if we could drill down a little bit on that from the staff perspective?
Sure, I think it's, you know, not necessarily meant to imply that we don't now, but making sure that, you know, future-looking, that's the type of facilities that we're planning for. So making sure that we're keeping those aspects, you know, in the forefront as we're planning for, you know, new schools or upgrades to schools, or any other facilities or improvements that schools might need.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just can't think of a scenario where we wouldn't be doing that. And so maybe it's drilling down into what do we really want to see to define success there? And I'm kind of skipping around a little bit. I think one of the questions was, what's missing? And I was curious about, you know, affordable childcare. We hear a lot about that, and we see a few proposals come through. Everybody needs it. And I'm curious, from the perspective of the commission, is that something that you all think should be touched on in terms of, maybe as an action item or an objective, not sure where it fits, but that topic in general, this affordable, how childcare, we talk about the components of the resilient, equitable community, thriving and prosperous, connected and accessible, welcoming and equitable. There seems to be a common thread there. So I'll just put that out there.
Great idea. Thank you. Commissioner Karazana?
Oh, just actually following on a couple of trends that have been mentioned here by Commissioner Bivins and Claiborne, and actually if you can go to 1.10, so I think it's a one right after the Commissioner Claiborne just mentioned. Provide public, public school facilities in locations that are appropriate, you know, for projected enrollment and so forth. I think maybe that's part of what Commissioner Bivins was getting at. There's the need to rethink where some of our schools are located, and that also means land use and opportunities to either purchase land or partner with, with groups, organizations that might want to, we know that there are some conversations up north where that might be possible, North 29. So while it's, it's a, it's a, it's an appropriate goal, it's something we need to do a little bit more, maybe this goes into the second piece, right? The face, the face three part of it is, how does that occur? What are the mechanisms, the tools that we have in our, in our toolbox to enable that to, to, to happen? And how do we begin? Because right now, I mean, our, some of our schools aren't keeping up with, we know that, with the growth. So what are the alternatives? And thinking broadly and outside of, just putting another trailer.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Firehawk?
So I'll just say, I have a number of comments on some specific goals and objectives, but I think what we're supposed to talk about now is what's missing.
Okay, you can, you can be our transition point, too.
Okay, all right. Oh, you'll be sorry.
Yeah, I just have a couple of thoughts.
Just kidding. Well, earlier when I said I didn't have any comments, you said, awesome. I was like, wow, all right. Earlier this evening, I'm sure you didn't mean it like that.
Thank you.
All right, touche. I'm going to throw something a little far out as an item that's missing from infrastructure. And this, some of you may know what I do for a living, so this might not seem so far out. But I would like to propose, and I can help you with some wording for this, but that we have a, some, either it's an objective, or I don't know if it's used to be a goal, but to mention the idea that nature is infrastructure, right? So when we're looking at reducing stormwater runoff and flooding, you know, like one large mature tree can take up several thousand gallons of water per tree per year. So if you add that up to a lot of, sorry, this is real, a lot of trees, that actually has an impact on stormwater runoff and water quality. And then also, if we think about the infrastructure of our trees, and, and this is why I teach people how to do this. Basically, when we are planning for a disaster, if we have, for example, thought about which of our trees are helping us as wind breaks or stormwater uptake, we've actually had situations, or using them in best management practices to soak up stormwater. We've had FEMA actually pay to replace those lost trees because your comprehensive plan called them out as infrastructure. And then, you know, that would require some additional work to say which trees are infrastructure, not every tree in Almarl County, but ones that are serving an important role for buffering the stream or for water quality function. So I could work with the county on that, but I think that the other element where we need to do more work in our county is in our emergency management plan, in our debris management, debris staging, all of that needs a lot of work. If we, well, it took us a long line, time to clean up from the ice storm that we had, as well as the straight-line winds event that we had several years ago. And there are potential, we've kind of dodged a bullet. We haven't had a hurricane Camille for a while, but, although we did have those floods in the eighties that were really terrible. However, there are a lot of extra requirements that we need to have in place in our county to be properly reimbursed by FEMA, or reimbursed at all by FEMA. So I have some thoughts on how we might amend our emergency plan for the county, but I think we need to put something in there that nature is infrastructure and, and what some of those functions are, and then also talk about emergency preparation and cleanup. And, and I can't give you an articulated, like, strategy this evening, but just to say, like, if we can have a placeholder for that, and then I would be happy to work with staff. All right, so to be more into the specifics, real quick, objective 2.2, it talks about, you know, looking at solar sighting and appropriate lands, and it's, what it's trying to get at is not, you know, impacting pristine landscapes, et cetera. So it says, previously timbered land, you know, or previous, you know, could be appropriate for solar. I just want to point out that all, almost all land in Almarl County may be previously timbered. Most of our county is on its third cutover, whether you know it or not. And people ask the Department of Forestry to come look at their old growth forest, okay, all the time. We don't have any old growth forests in the county. All right, so I just think, I don't want to say, like, if it was ever timbered, it would be appropriate, because then that would be all forests. The other thing I, I feel like my mic is super loud tonight. The other thing is, I don't know what a silvicultural soil is. Does anybody? I mean, I know what agricultural soil is, and I know about the class rankings for different categories of soil for different crops, and I.
Soil under forest, right?
Yeah, but it's not a specific soil that a tree grows in.
Oh, I see, right.
So I don't think there is such a thing.
There's the practice of silver culture.
Yeah.
Yes, but there's no such thing as a silvicultural soil.
Right, right.
I'll put my soils one-on-one hat on. There's soils that are better for cotton, there's soils that are better for.
Soybeans.
Soybeans, yeah. I mean, like grape growing, they don't care. Grapes like crap soil, and they don't care. But.
Like a slope.
And apple trees, too, but who cares? The point is that I don't think there's a silvicultural soil, so I'll just, just say agricultural soils. And then there was a thing on objective 3.2, I'm sorry, I don't know what the goal it was under, that my tablet I'm sorry, I don't know what the goal, it was under, my tablet died and I lost my place, but it says cellular for personal wireless and cellular should be provided for all public parks. And I know this came up, and I asked this question where, you know, we've had a couple of park sites with solar, or cell towers, sorry, solar, cell towers proposed, and I asked the question, are we saying, like, if it's a park, it should have a cell tower, because it should have cell service? Because we don't have that policy. So I personally do not want to support every park should have a cell service necessarily, because I think that just opens the door for every park should have a cell tower. And why do I care? Well, there is that notion, too, of quiet enjoyment of nature, and sometimes you don't want to hear 10 people going by yakking on their cell phones. I understand the emergency servicing, but I'm just flagging that. I don't know if anyone agrees with me at all, but I'm not sure I want to say that all parks should be covered by cell servers. Really, I guess, a minor point. Okay, and then, yeah, the other comments I made at the very beginning about just preparing for disasters and have, there's things like advanced contracts that we should have in place for debris management, we don't, blah, blah, blah. So some of those could be specific things under Objective 4.1 capacity to prepare and recover from disaster. So I have some specific action ideas, but I'm just saying, maybe we should get more specific on that. And I'm not prepared to give eloquent wording tonight, apparently.
Great, thank you. I'm going to just throw out a couple thoughts if I could, and then go back around the group. So these are really more kind of in keeping with Karen's last comments, more in general, and thinking through each of the categories. But one thing that strikes me on this as kind of a general comment is it feels like a lot of what we're talking about, similar to what we've talked about in other sections, is really going to depend on the action steps. And in this case, also priorities, like prioritization. I mean, I think there's a limited amount of resources, and at some point, fire and rescue is going to be probably looking for resources that would otherwise, you know, be applied to another area or schools or wherever it is. So just thinking through how that fits into this comprehensive plan, what are the priorities? If there's a way to identify those, maybe not. Maybe it's just laying out all the needs and then eventually working through some priorities. But thinking through that, I think, would be helpful. Going down a list of topics, and forgive me if any of these sort of are more personal than general, but wireless is one area that I would think was, from the standpoint of equity, and I'm looking at page, I think I'm at page 19, one thing I would just want to highlight is, with new technologies that are coming in now, you know, the, we actually saw this on the ARB a while ago, where heights of towers are having to go, you know, increased, and utility companies are asking for antenna arrays to be added to the top of existing facilities. Now, all of a sudden, you're sticking up above your reference tree, and it just, you know, keeping in mind the fact that there are going to be changes in technology and having a proactive way to think about how we respond to wireless providers. Stormwater management is on page 20, just thinking through some aspects of stream restoration, as you mentioned in there, and ways to, again, prioritize those, and if there are opportunities for developers to restore streams as part of their development plan, keeping those in mind. On the very last page, or maybe it's page 21, there's a statement that says, infrastructure needs to keep up with growth. And what I would suggest is that we are in some places catching up with growth. So it's both keeping up and catching up with what's in place. And so thinking through that holistically. Almost done. Broadband, so appreciate all the work that's being done. This is on page 18, and that picture is probably taken out of my backyard. They have, Firefly has been installing, and it has taken a year and a half to get from Crossroads Store down to anywhere near my house. And when we talk to the folks, it's because the quality of the installers is really poor, and they're having to redo a lot of work.
I tell you that.
And so I feel like it's great to have this broadband accessibility and affordability office. I would just stress that not only are we thinking about how to bring broadband and continue to bring that to the area, but ensuring that the quality and follow-up is also part of that aspect. And I'll stop there. Commissioner Karazan?
Okay, all right. So a bunch of stuff here. First, mentioning, going back to the solar and Karen's comments, I think one of the nuances there is there's different kinds of forests. Loblawi is not typical for Alamo County. So I think when we're talking about, you know, lands that have been, you know, cleared and forested, we're talking about loblawi plantations, you know, those aren't...
But it doesn't say that, yeah.
It doesn't say that, it should say that.
Because I look at, I look at, sorry, I look at timber sites differently. Is this a site that was hardwood that was harvested, and the hardwood's going to grow back, or has this been a pine, a loblawi pine plantation for 30 years?
Absolutely, that's exactly. And I will say, though, that based upon aerial imagery, we have had forests in Alamo County that were mature back in 1939, and have continuously been there since 1939. So that's pushing pretty close to old growth forest, 1939. So the other thing, I think, we're talking about county facilities in here, and maybe this is partially a question to staff, I know that in the biodiversity action plan, we have a number of action items and goals that are related to county facilities, specifically encouraging the county to model best management practices on its, on county facilities, including conservation mowing, which is happening at many schools and around the county now. And then also using native plants, as you'll see around the, here. And there's a little blurb in here about it, but there's no, didn't see, appear to be any goals or objectives related to that. So it'd be nice to have those in there, to at least acknowledge the great work the county is already doing in that regard.
Yeah, it's done it at this facility here.
Exactly.
But they could call it out, I guess.
Under electricity, you know, we've talked about, I didn't see it in here, because I missed it, but I think one of the big things where I am in Sugar Hollow, probably way more important than broadband, is burying those electric cables. And I don't know if the county has any influence whatsoever on that, probably not. But in terms of resilience for us, I mean, like, getting those electric lines buried is huge for us, much more so than wireless. And then, in terms of resiliency to hazard mitigation, we have a, you know, the county has a flood overlay hazard. I think we need to really consider a fire overlay hazard district, and really think about areas the county, there are fire risks. You know, I live, you know, in Sugar Hollow, we're up against, up near the Shenandoah National Park. There had been some fires, some significant fires up in the Shenandoah. It's worth noting that homes and other infrastructure that's right up there next to the park is at a higher risk of fire. And so I think that, you know, we need to start thinking about that and indicating that on our maps.
I showed a map to the Board of Supervisors a while back of the fire ignition density maps for Alamo County, and it's already been mapped what's high-risk. And I said, at the very least, you should have this information in the comp plan. I mean, it's in, it's mapped in GIS.
Well, there you go.
By foresters.
I fully support inclusion of Karen's map.
Yeah. I mean, the reaction was, I didn't know there was all this fire risk. That was the reaction I got. And I said, well, it's, you know, it's out there, so.
Oh, and the other thing I'll say, though, too, and I, I guess we'll come back to the other question about, about, there's a specific question that was on there about expanding water and sewer. Are we going to come back to that, or?
Yeah, well, you can go there, because I know Commissioner Vivins will.
No, I'm actually going to do that when it's appropriate.
Oh, this is appropriate. It's an all-play, right?
I'm actually, I'm not, I'm going to wait on that if you, I have some other questions that aren't as...
Exciting?
That won't allow me to sort of preach on it. This is just sort of warming up.
Commissioner Murray, are you done?
For now, I guess.
Okay.
It'll come after. It'll be hard to, it will be hard to do and to provide any rebuttal to what I'm going to say about the other thing, given some, given the people's passion for affordable housing. So there's just a couple of questions that I kind of had here to clear up, that I think goes to, is it included? And one of it is, when we go to renewable energy, when we go to broadband, we have this title in there that says, which is basically to be sensitive to historic and scenic landscapes. And so I always want to know, how is that determined? Whose landscapes?
Whose aesthetic?
Yeah, because there's where we start breaking down about equity.
About equity?
About equity. That's where we start having issues around whose landscape is more valuable than somebody else's landscape. We'll hear it again if the people from Nodry Farm broke, breaking up, broken up, comes back to us, you know. And so the whole idea, when we talk about those kinds of things, that we're sensitive to the fact that certain pieces of property came with the blurb that this has got incredible views of the Western Mountain, but at what expense? And so being sensitive to how, who's going to determine that on your staff about that. And that also goes to some other pieces that I'll ask you about. So on Goal 4, where it's 4.3, and it says, improve and expand access to a healthy and affordable local food system, prioritizing affordable access for census tracts that have a higher social vulnerability index. I don't even know how we do that. And first of all, I don't actually know what that means. So if you could give some narrative, not now, but when you roll that out, to what does that mean? How do we, how are we doing that as a county? I know how we've done that for county staff by having that food pharmacy that we've done to provide that, but I don't know how you grow that at a scale that would be for people with a higher vulnerability.
Right, like, are we going to start a farmer's market thing, or a community garden program, or what does that mean?
And how is it sustained?
Right.
That's, so that was the other thing that I was also worried about, how is it sustained? I don't want to get in a wrestling match with the board, the school board, about where schools go. They've got a whole, it might be nice to have a presentation from their planner at some point, but they talk to the Board of Supervisors. There's enough of a wrestling match there about schools and fundings. I personally don't need to be involved in that. I don't need to be involved in deciding where schools go, because I'm not an elected official, and I don't want people calling me every night, telling me that I took the school away from their town, from their job. That's not anything that I want to do. You all might want to do that, but I'm going to be absent for that meeting by plausible deniability.
A whole podcast on how I've ruined schools. There's a whole podcast on how I personally have ruined schools.
I know that, I know that.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's all my fault.
And so I said, I don't know, I don't want to be involved in that anywhere again. And then there's some other pieces, but I'll give you some notes. But really trying to figure out who gets to decide what historic and scenic vision vistas get to be preserved, and the whole idea of what is, oh, there was a piece about what's under personal wireless service facilities policy. There's this other thing, other types of wireless facilities. I don't know what those might be. So if you would, just for example, other types of, it's in, there's a bullet point, I don't know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and the eighth bullet point on page 6, you say that. So what, I'm not asking you to tell me that now, but if you just give some pieces about that, and I'll come back till we get to the specific questions. Thank you, Karen.
Great, thank you.
Aren't we on the specific questions?
No, they're not there.
Oh, we're still on both.
Yeah, then we're going to get, we'll go to you for, and then we'll come back on solar and water and sewer.
Okay, so we're looking at Goals, which Goals specifically, Goal 2, 3?
Sure.
Does it apply? Sure, does it apply? We're still in does it apply mode.
And what is missing?
Sure.
Okay, yeah. One thing I noticed missing, and this is maybe just a small-ish thing, but it was on the public water and sewer. We actually have some homes in the development area that don't have sewer as well. And I just noted that it only includes the rural. Might not be a huge deal, I just remember from my ACSA days that, like, shockingly close to major shopping centers and everything else that are still using septic. I was like, huh, okay. So that might be worth including, it's a small thing, the big picture, but one that stood out. I also don't want to wrestle over where the next schools go. I got opinions, but whatever. I'll go to the school board sometime and tell them my opinion.
Yeah, there you go.
Similarly, the, in Objective 2.3, the phrase scenic landscape context kind of stood out to me, as did the bit on the wireless service facilities policy where we're talking about. I think Commissioner Firehawk has great perspectives on things, and I think I actually sort of very much different on this particular item, where I was like, oh, visibility is the primary focus in the review of personal wireless. That's cool, I like seeing cell towers, too. Oh, we want limited visibility. So I think I'm the outlier, perhaps, or at least against the grain on that one. Similarly, looking at Objective 3.2, coordinate with service providers to provide wireless service to all public facilities, parks, and community resilience hub locations. And Commissioner Firehawk was like, do we need to do that? And I was actually thinking, why don't we expand that to all paved roads for service?
All paved roads.
But that's just me. And anybody who's been on a paved road and been like, damn, my cell signal stop worked, it's gone. How do I get back? My directions are gone.
I've got lost, and like, okay, because nobody carries maps anymore. That's it, I can never come home.
Echoing Commissioner Murray as well, I mean, Dominion has held together duct tape and baling wire. We saw that yesterday and today.
What happened yesterday?
It took down Ting because the fire pole got knocked over by a truck. It took out power, and Ting can get it.
Where was that?
It was in the city.
Well, because I was in the city, and they told me Dominion sent 10 men out to my site and said, a squirrel ate the wire.
I don't know. Well, there was a report that it was, the news can sort it out. I'm not, that's not the kind of media I'm reporting on. My point is that...
You're talking about resilience?
We're talking about resiliency. It's like, if one pole goes down, it affects thousands of people.
That's it.
We've got an issue, you know. And that's small scale, right? I mean, like, it's just one pole by some freak accident, whether it was a truck or a squirrel, I don't know. But, but yeah. And Ting was throwing serious shade at Dominion today, and their statement is like, but yeah, I mean, like, they're like, yeah, we can't get your service back till Dominion does his job.
But like, people, CIVEC is so much more responsible. Like, it seems, I'm sorry, I don't know what it is, but, you know, when we were down in Batesville, I was just talking to my neighbors down there, saying, you know, there's folks that are on Central Virginia Electric Cooperative, don't have near as many problems as those folks on Dominion. And I don't know what's going on there, but...
I don't either. I think, you know, there's a bigger picture thing. Obviously, Dominion's role in state politics is beyond what just Alamo County, or much less our planning commission can just sort of like, fix it, Dominion. Oh, okay, yeah, we heard you loud and clear, guys. But at the same time, if we're talking about resiliency, if we're talking about our capacity prepared for natural disasters, that's a big one, you know? And whether that's some kind of like mesh network of decentralized or municipal-provided, I don't know what the legality is in Virginia. It's enabling authority for municipal broadband or electric. But my point is, that kind of resiliency, where we have backups, makes a lot of sense to me to think about, yeah. And there's no broadband without electricity. There's no lot of things without electricity. So it's kind of like the core utility behind the other things as well. And then on the man-made ones, too, and I don't know if it's appropriate to bring this up, but like, you know, we're in Charlottesville, where, you know, now six and a half years ago, where we had the Unite the Right rally, and actual fascists marched all over. And now we have a candidate who some say is in the lead, who says he'll be a dictator. How do we mobilize for that? How do we organize for that? How do we prepare for that disaster? I don't know if we include that in this kind of plan or not, but how do we keep our people safe is a relevant conversation
That is.
as political things happen.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
So let's skip now to the two final bullets. Number one is, does the commission support Objective 1.4 to provide public water and sewer to some legacy zoning areas in the rural area? Why don't we start down here, Commissioner Firehawk?
I think that I understand, I have support of Objective 1.4. What it was getting at was, you might remember recently, we actually had some applicants who, just by a weird boundary, there was... who, just by a weird boundary, they were like really enveloped by the urban area, but they just didn't have reliable hydrant service, which was servicing a number of businesses, so it was a fire risk for them, and we extended the water. So there's a bunch of weird legacy sites like that. That's the way I read that. I didn't read it as like, we're going to run all these new lines to new rural properties. And then the other, the second one, could you put that back, the second question? Is that, sorry?
Solar.
Yeah, the solar. Yeah, we absolutely need a policy. That's the problem that we face now, where we don't, we have a policy in the resiliency plan that says we should reuse whenever possible existing sites, adaptive reuse, already impacted sites, brownfields, whatever. So that's the only policy we have, but it doesn't really address the rural area, and, you know, we need to have a policy for that.
Can I ask, maybe ask staff a question about this? So the location policy for utility scale solar, I'm sure is intentional that you have utility scale. Are there smaller scale solar projects that we should be focusing on?
The project that we had deferment recently on was not utility scale.
Secretary Sands.
It was too small in terms of the electricity to be generated to be considered utility scale.
That is my point, yeah.
Yes.
David Benish, Development Process Manager. Yeah, the utility scale that we're looking at, and keep in mind, we are, staff is drafting ordinance changes as we're doing this policy. We're kind of working together with them. The way that the draft ordinance is defined is utility solar would be 1 megawatt, but the standards that we would be looking at would be applicable for below that. I think the thinking is that the criteria for those higher scales may be appropriate for lesser scales.
Higher impact sites might need additional standards.
That's right. You might apply more, but the approach would be general enough that they would, we hope with your review and everyone's work on it, to be applicable for things of lesser scale too.
Great.
We are focusing in on this section for ones that would be subject to compliance with the conference of plan reviews, ones that are thought to be public, and the way that the draft ordinance is structured, that's where the 1 megawatt comes from.
I got you. Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. Thanks. Thank you. Commissioner Carazana?
Not a lot to add to what Commissioner Firehawk mentioned. I will say that, actually, I think Mr. Moore also mentioned this. Let's see, can you? Yeah. The first one on the legacy zoning. So recently, we had another application where it was a commercial, or it was a light industrial property, is actually in the growth area and did not have access to sewer and water. And they were talking about the cost of, well, how much it would be. So just echo what Mr. Moore said, that this is only talking about rural areas, and there are some places within the development areas that also, we could prioritize that as extensions as well. And I agree with what's been said about the solar.
Awesome. Commissioner Clayburn?
For me, it's a yes to both of them. I'll flag something for future discussion, probably under economic development, but as data centers, I think that's something that's, conversations are happening everywhere in Virginia, particularly in Northern Virginia, and the rural landscapes there, and so I don't want to be that naive to think that could not come to us, and so there might be economic development, but I just want to flag that for future discussion.
And that is a very important conversation to have before we're hit with something. It's better to have that conversation now than when we need it.
Yeah. Good segue.
I will be an outlier on this one, in the sense, my issue with provide public water and sewer to some legacy zoning areas, is that some of the language in there seem to suggest providing water and sewer to areas that just have potential development based upon their zoning. I would not be in support of that. Now, if there's development that has already occurred and that has documented failing septic systems or water quality issue, I of course support that, but I would not support expanding water and sewer just based upon potential development.
I think that's intended.
Oh, yeah, and I absolutely agree with that. We need a solar siting ordinance.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Bivins?
So there's a couple things. Am I correct, so before I go off on this, am I correct that there's a cellular phone policy that's being redone that will come before somebody? I don't know if it's our sources, supervisors.
Well, it's a personal wireless service facility. There's a potential rewrite of the zoning ordinance regarding.
Zoning ordinance for that, but it's going to be a.
We'll be doing, we're tracking the same thing.
Okay, 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 so similar kind of thing. So that's good. Because as we're on there, if you follow what's going on in Richmond, there's a bunch of bills coming in that say, we can't say doodly squat about any of that stuff. So just, you know, don't get yourselves too wound up over that until the legislation comes through. So it may be a moot point, but in any event. So let's go back to this whole idea of why certain services were not extended to certain places. Let's go back to a little time in the 70s where there was a story that said that water had to be protected in certain ways, because that's what the technology said at that particular time, and that's what the topography of the land looked like, particularly around the reservoir. So we had topography that looked a certain way, and we had technology that functioned a certain way, and if we want to protect the watershed, we can't have these people connected to it. That made perfectly sense back in the late 70s. I don't think that makes sense today for a whole bunch of reasons. Hey, the topography around the reservoir, if you've looked, has radically changed, and it has been from there, and technology, as some people in this room are much smarter than me, know that the watershed technology and how one protects watersheds is very different than it was in the 70s, and so there are some options. So while I'm not suggesting that we should do a wholesale re-imagination of what the watershed and the jurisdiction, I am saying a couple things. We also, I've become aware in my time sitting on this committee, that we deal with exceptions. We're like that special group of people in an organization always get something before us because they didn't like the rules. And like the rules that say you could have this much density, they didn't like the rules because the tax map said this, they didn't like rules because they wanted to zone a different way, and they didn't want to go through a special use permit, so they came to us for a zoning map amendment. None of those things occurred looking at the holistic way water and sewer were managed in the county. It's all been one decision at a time, without going back and looking at, how does this decision affect a decision, affect a point of view or a decision on the county back in the late 70s? I have a situation in my district, and I don't believe it can be solved by this, I'd like it to be solved with this, where a, let's say a 30-plus units were built in the 70s, and they were done in the way things were done in the county at that time, what a handshake and a wink. Okay? They're also done at a time in the county when people weren't paying a lot of attention to how sewer system, how septic systems were installed. So there are places on this particular property that I'm talking about on Lamb's Road, where there are septic systems on top of septic systems that would never be allowed to happen today. And I will also share with you that those septic systems run down to Ivy Creek that everybody's so proud of, because where does it run? Into the Ravanna. However, when we talk about can we get just a septic, can we get sewer out there to keep the sewage from running down the hill into Ivy Creek, it's not in the jurisdiction. So what are we saying? Are we saying we prefer for the sewage to run down into Ivy Creek because this particular property's not in the jurisdiction? Or are we saying that the watershed is more valuable, so we're going to figure out how to get, not water down there, but how we're going to go down there and deal with the sewage problem? Because in the 70s, when these units were built, they just decided to do anything they wanted to do, because at that particular time, handshakes got things done in our county. This particular area that I'm talking about also happens to be very accessible for people with modest incomes.
Is what?
Modest incomes.
Modest.
Modest incomes. So what will happen probably? We will say no, we will continue to say no. The owner of the property will come in because he's got means, because it's a good-sized organization, they will figure out a solution for the multiple septic systems that will raise the property value and raise the rents, and it will no longer be an affordable community. Because we made a decision that we can't move a line to deal with the sewage in a place that when it was built, did not have the regulations that it was here. When the regulations were put into place, they did not go and look at the conditions of the property there because they didn't know. But we're going to lose probably 50 units of affordable housing because we can't come up with a solution to keep sewage from running eventually into Ivy Creek. And so I think for me, sort of this help, this can the county have a healthy, safe, and resilient community, comes into the fact that at some points, if we believe that some housing that needs to be preserved as affordable housing for individuals in our county, we may have to be a little bit more creative in how we do certain things. That it can't be, that we can't take the, that we can't take the position that nothing can change. Because if we take the position that everything is frozen as it was frozen in the late 70s, then we're going to lose housing because to invest in it means it's going to turn it to something much more expensive for the person to maintain, and it's no longer going to be affordable or accessible housing. I don't know how you, these are the hard questions. I don't know how we deal with that. All I know, the consequence by not dealing with it will mean that this particular tract of probably, it's 21 structures, but in those 20, it's duplexes, so there's probably about 50 families that live there, and all 50 of those families have modest jobs in our community and live close to school, and they live close to their jobs. All the things that we say we want people to do, live close to school and live close to their jobs. So that's why, I don't think that there's a solution that's coming out of this, but that's why, at a different level, at a mega level, at a mega level, I'm trying to figure out, how can we deal? And my colleague over here talked about, there are some places in the development community, particularly in the Jack Jewett District, who, when they built these houses, they didn't get access to the sewer or to water. Because the houses were there, the systems came down the road, I'm not even going to pretend how they didn't connect up. I don't know, I don't care. I just know that they're not connected. And today, we have in the development area, systems with people with failing systems, and maybe they've got the money to put a new septic system in, maybe they've got the $20,000 to connect to the line, which is right at the end of their street. I don't know the answer to that. But I think if we care about keeping people with limited means in housing that's close to school, close to their jobs, we've got to figure out how this infrastructure works for people in those situations. And that does not mean, I am not suggesting that the sewer system come in front of my house and that my houses connect up to it. That's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting there are communities that we're trying to preserve accessible housing, and we need to be flexible in the solutions that we come up with. Jared, there's my preach.
So, no, that was helpful. So just to make sure that I, I understand what you're saying, but as it relates to objective 1.4.
Yes.
What I think you're saying is, yes.
Yes. But I'm not giving, I'm trying not to say, because I don't want to scare my, I don't want to scare my neighbor here. So I'm not trying to say that we just blast the word.
I understand.
What I'm saying is that there are situations.
I understand.
Because, oh, I didn't say this. So Farmington just went to the board of supervisors about getting access, do you want me to go on with this? To get access for their laundry. And I believe that was a yes they were received. Well, you would know because you were there.
You're stealing my thunder, bud.
Well, if you don't get to know me like this, because I steal everybody's thunder because I'm trying to make a point. So they got told yes. Now, full disclosure, I'm a member, so I need to disclose that, so that you all don't find out later. You don't find out later, oh, gee, look at that. But so, and then the organization, the community across the street, now I will let you, because I don't know the answer to this, but are known as Bel Air, they've got failing systems over there too. But let's see the difference between the Bel Air community and the community I'm speaking about on Lamb's Road. I understand they're close to the jurisdiction. You going to speak about this, Michael?
I was going, my comment is about the board. I was going to update you on.
Okay. Well, I'll let Mr. Burns tell you what happens with Bel Air, but my point is that what it looks at from this level is that groups of people with lots of influence, and you know this because you're dealing with the Ivy Corridor right there, with lots of influence, get the things that they want because they know how to sit in the system and have a conversation with the system.
Right.
But the 50-some-odd people who sit in this particular community on Lamb's Road would be truly uncomfortable if they had to come here and have that kind of conversation with the supervisors, like those two entities did two weeks ago.
So I don't think you and I are saying different things here. Because what I'm saying, my only issue with this is really that it, is that the language implies that we'd run sewer to places that just have development potential. And looking at Lamb's Road, there are properties there that have development potential. I would not argue, I would say we should not be running water and sewer to those properties. But if we can somehow provide water and sewer, we're some other solution.
Some other solution.
Because there are other solutions. I would go even further than that. There's a lot of, for a while, the Soil and Water Conservation District, you know, very briefly had some grant funding for district-wide septic.
Yep.
Where anyone who had septic issues in the entire Soil and Water Conservation District could apply, that money went like that.
Boom, that's right.
Because there was a huge need of people with failing septic systems in the county. I think whatever the county can do to help provide funding for septic repair and pumpouts and replacements, I think that would be a huge service to the county, and a huge service to water quality, environment, equity, all of it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bivins, any comments on the solar piece?
The only piece that I have on solar is that, you know, I don't know how as a community we can be as green as we pretend to be, and yet be constantly against anything that's an alternative energy source.
Right.
It's hard to hear.
I don't know how we can pretend to be so green, but then be against any alternative energy source. I don't get that. You know, we're not Lake Anna, so we're not going to put, you know, a nuclear site here. I don't even think we have a water, we probably don't even have a lake large enough to accommodate that kind of power. But, you know, we are, we've been seduced by Teslas, God help us. And we've been, we, there's a, the big energy people in town now, Tiger, you probably have seen this, are convincing people to put personal solar on top of their homes, which is fine for that particular individual, but it's not making a sizable dent in what our county is using for energy, or, because I don't want to say it that way, or how we're contributing to the long-term solution. And we hear about, we have to contribute to the long-term solution, but we want it to all happen in Green County, or we want it to all happen in Flavanna, or we want it to happen somewhere else but not here. So I am for it, because I think Albemarle County has an obligation to be in the game.
You're in support of goal number two as well?
I'm in support of goal number two, and I will also share, just because Corey was talking about data centers. We know that one of our neighbors down 64 is engaged in a conversation about a big data center right now.
Hmm.
You know?
Great.
They're doing it right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore? Two topics?
Same topics. I mentioned a little bit about these before.
Yeah.
Commissioner Carazana for echoing what I was saying about the development area septic, or rather sewer hookups as well. Short answer is, we're back to goal one. Yes. So yes to legacy zoning areas for that? That sounds good. I believe, Commissioner Murray and I could probably have a vigorous conversation about how we think about where development areas may go next, and I saw, we didn't get a chance to talk about it as much on the previous four o'clock hour, but that whole section felt like, what kind of plan do we make to plan if we're going to plan for an expansion? And it was like, the list of things was pretty decent. What I do wonder though is, like, we've got some areas, some places that are surrounded by the development area on three sides. Like, why don't we? Like, why don't we just get a map of like where the expansion would go when the time goes? But that's another time, another place. And in the meantime, maybe, you know, like, there's some areas where, there are some, some areas where there's water service but not sewer.
That's right.
Like Key West or like some of the other neighborhoods that are around, that, that may make sense for that kind of expansion. I know at ACSA, their, their policy is that growth pays for growth. In some of these cases, with some of the low-income neighborhoods that maybe Commissioner Bivens referred to and others, it may not be that simple. It's not like a big developer who's coming in and building 400 units and this is part of the cost. But that's, that's that. On the other point about solar, yeah, that one, there we go, it's coming over. All right. I certainly support encouraging citing solar facilities on sites that have already been impacted. That makes the most sense, you know, like where things are already kind of denuded or, or they've been timbered over or whatever. Sure, sure. How many of those do we have, honestly? I, I, I would say, now we're getting into like how the policy would look, I would not want to limit solar facilities only to sites that have already been deeply impacted by
I think it just says encourage.
Yeah, it just says encourage.
I know, I know. I'm just saying, I'm just saying I would not want to flip.
Right, it doesn't say limit it to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what people have been telling us.
Right.
People have been telling us, don't even look at there, put it on top of a, a shopping center roof, which is not, that's not, um,
Yeah.
That's not utility scale, is it? No, putting on top, we don't even, we don't have anything.
Unless it was a mega mall.
Oh, and we don't have a, we don't have a mall that big.
But, yeah, I mean, I think there was also conversations about landfills, for example.
Well, we did one landfill.
Solar on a landfill?
The one up on Dick, Dickwood's Road?
That's right.
We got one, we got, and it may be finished for all I know.
There was an alternative, an alternative mentioned to use a landfill for the Secretary Sands as well.
Yeah, the Keen Land.
Yeah.
The Keen landfill.
Yeah, that, it's just sitting there.
Yeah, okay.
The point is, I think that's, that's, that's good. I, I, I do think this is one of those where the, the, sort of green goals of, of protecting certain soils and the green goals of alternative energy sources that are, that are renewable have a tension. And, and how we sort of run that track is going to be of finding that balance that'll always kind of be, but the tension is, I don't know how it goes away.
Right.
I think part of what would help the tension is having the policies in place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, some, some rubric by which you evaluate.
So I support there being a rubric.
A long way. I think that's part of the concern. It's not that we don't want to look at alternative energy, it's that we don't want to look at it without.
We're just making up our standards, basically.
Yeah, it's like, well, I think this, yeah.
Because you have nothing for the rural area.
Right.
There are, there are some very negative impacts from these.
I understand, yeah.
In the soil. And so we're, we're learning, right, as we go with some of these developments that have happened in other places. And so we should be smart and, and, you know, pick up those lessons, learn and apply them to what we're doing here.
Oh, absolutely. And just in the months that I've been on here, I've been learning a lot more about the things too. It's not, it's not a fantasy. And no, so I, I do support there being a policy, of course. Like, I was just thinking about, thinking next step of what that policy might look like.
Awesome. I'll, I'll just add a couple of comments briefly to the discussion. One is, on the subject of supporting objective 1.4, yes, and focusing on priorities, right? So if resources are going to those areas that are in the fringes, it means there's potentially money that is available for those to do that, right? And maybe strategically, it is important to develop in those areas, but do you have the, the resources to be able to do that and provide it in the areas that are, I guess, more strategic in a sense? The other thing related to solar scale or utility scale solar, or just solar in general, and I mentioned it, is, and this came up, I think, in one, in the previous work session, is considering county-owned lands and seeing that as a win-win potentially in the county where the county is contributing land, potentially leasing land, getting income from that, but also supporting sustainability. So thinking through how one might do that as well. And so with that, I'll look to staff. Anything we have not answered or that you have questions of that remain?
No, I think you all covered it really well and we really appreciate all the feedback and looking forward to the upcoming work session on February 27th for the rural area.
Thank you for flexing on that because thinking about doing rural areas right now is daunting.
May I make a, one last solar comment, though? Would I be allowed?
Is this a bright light?
Just one. No, I just want to say, I mean, you know, I've only had two solar sites come to me. One was a, a, a Loblawy Pine site and we did approve it. It had minimally impactful in my judgment. And then we had a much larger site that was heavily impacted. It had been timbered, but the soils were heavily eroded. Yes. So, and, and I voted for that as well. So I'm, I'm all for solar, but I just want to say that if you, the whole point, not the whole point, but a major point of solar is to have a energy source that is not releasing carbon into the atmosphere. So it's foolish to cut down a mature hardwood forest with a thick duff layer, most of the so, uh, carbon is actually in the soils, to cut that down to put up solar panels. So that's, that's an example where, yes, we do need some guidance because there's forestry and there's forestry, there's forests and there's forest, they're not all the same. And I do look very much at, you know, there was, I would say to you that that large-scale source, utility scale source that we approved was having massive erosion. You know, that site is actually going to become more stable, in my opinion, after they go in and, and plant the soils and amend them and, you know, put permanent cover on that site. So that site, in my opinion, got better and it wasn't taking away a mature hardwood forest. So I just want to be clear that that's, again, an example of why we need this guidance.
And I, I never meant to imply that I was opposed to having a good policy. Yeah, yeah.
I'm curious, we've talked a little bit about guidance, needing guidance, and this, you know, we, sometimes I feel like we're trying to re, we're reinventing the wheel in our own minds, but we know that we're not. Have you guys reached out to other communities to, to talk about solar ordinances and what the best practices are?
And some suggestions.
Yeah. Okay.
Go ahead, David.
I believe so. I'm kind of a liaison, but I know that we have a consultant working with that. And so we're, we've got a source that is experienced with the technology. And I do believe, and I, I have looked at other localities, conference of plan, policies and such. Some are very good, some are very rudimentary.
Yeah, I'm sure. Cool. Because I know Augusta County, I think, just approved one and maybe Nelson as well.
I don't think the Nelson one got approved.
Oh, right? Okay.
Whatever happened to that one on 55, it was on that big farm down there, coming off Jefferson Parkway? Or maybe you weren't.
I don't think it went for it. Can I add one more really small point?
Sure.
Um, this was about schools. I'm not going to get into school citing either, but I did want to say that we had that situation with Southwood where there was the idea to put in a urban-scale school. I'm not going to comment on whether you want a school there or not. But, but it, part of the reason these things get rejected is like, well, that's not enough land for a school. But if we're developing at a higher density than urban ring, why can't we have an urban-type school? And I'm not talking about like P, Public School 59 in New York City where kids play basketball on the rooftop and it's got a big chain link fence around it. But I went to an urban, a public school. We played outside. We didn't need to have 10 acres or whatever the ridiculous land use is. So we need to suggest, I think, in the comprehensive plan, that we should look at a different urban school model. Because otherwise, we're looking for this, you know, Nirvana site that is rapidly disappearing to try to find enough land to meet a standard that doesn't really have a practical basis in children's ability to learn and play outside.
And for that particular issue, there, there, there was a lot of wrestling with trying to make that work. And I think at the end of the day, it's the parties could not come to a timetable that worked for, for each party.
So you feel like our school board was really supportive of that urban school?
They certainly would have put a school there if there could have been a, a mutually agreed.
Let's just say it in policy that we want to support urban, you know, that we want to support an adaptive or different model for urban schools, similar to what we want to find in a dense urban area. Because that's supposedly what our policy is heading towards. Anyway, that's a very minor point, but.
Yeah, or, or maybe consider.
Yeah, just, just that, that we acknowledge that we don't have to have, because I, I've talked to a lot of school boards and they'll always tell me like, well, we can't do it because the minimum acreage is this, but it's just, it's just a made-up number.
Well, it's, 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 as we go back to what my rant was earlier, it's the suburban mindset.
Right.
And so.
Right, exactly.
If I, if I buy into the fact that I've got to have a house with this much green around it, then by default, my child has to go to a school that has this much green, has these many, these many, these many fields to do all the various things that I, I envision my child having access to. And as many of us, we went to, had really good schools, but we didn't have all those fields around our schools.
Well, and then much of that is just moan anyway. It's not actually used.
Yeah, there's a lot of unused land. I, I look at a lot of school sites. I develop planting plans for them and they just have a lot of wasted land. It's not land for assemblies. Anyway, let's get off this cool soapbox, so.
So you're going to be on YouTube yet again. You're going to be on YouTube yet again.
I'm just thinking about ways that we can give constructive, detailed feedback to staff. And I would say that maybe on page 13, right? Somewhere in the top paragraph is where you could potentially add the idea of that Commissioner Firehawk's sharing. Or consider it there. Awesome. All right, thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Great work, staff, as always. And hopefully our comments were helpful. We'll move us from the work session now on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports anybody would like to share? I'll start with Ms. Firehawk.
We were not able to achieve quorum for historic.
Historic.
Committee. Can you pass it?
I think we're going to have bets here. We're going to have, we're going to have a betting system to see whether or not you meet.
Yeah, start a pool.
Commissioner Carazana?
No committees.
No committees? Mr. Murray?
Well, staff might end up covering this too, but I went to Batesville and attended the AC 44.
Yeah, thank you.
That was, is very interesting there. A lot of stuff going on in Batesville that I didn't realize. You know, I, one of the things that I found very interesting was they have a pretty well-developed community trail system there.
Yeah.
And so the idea of our crossroads communities, it, it changed some of my, you know, even had, as someone who lived in, in that area, it changed some of my opinions about some of the things that we should put in there in crossroads communities. I don't think part of that, that I would thought that we should have put explicitly that people should have a light that staff proposed the idea of having safe places to walk. And, and even thought about the idea of things like community trails. I think that, that is something that would be a valuable thing in our rural area. And it looks like people are already taking initiative to do it. So other things, of course, heard a lot about the three-truck restrictions and, you know, I heard a lot about, you know, the need for traffic calming in some of these areas where there's a lot of vehicles going through. So, but I'm sure staff will have more to say.
Yeah, no, great. I just, I'll tag team onto that. I attended the same work session and I'm always amazed, I've attended a couple of work sessions, the previous one was with VDOT and the closing of the bridge that was just to the west, I guess, of them. It's a very passionate community. They come out and are very outspoken. The thing that I was also appreciative of is they acknowledged a lot of the people who couldn't make it to that community meeting, for whatever reason, and that there needed to be a way, which I know staff is doing, to reach out to them to get comments. Thank you. Commissioner Bivens?
So I attended a CAC along with Kevin, who I'm going to, I have handouts for this. Because I think just because we live in this community, you should know what's going on around the hydraulic road. Oh, Kevin, what's his name?
Roundabout.
Oh, Hillsdale roundabout, roundabout around Whole Foods and Kroger's. And I've got some hand, I've got handouts for you to be able to look at. But before I give you that, I should just, you should just know we had a, and it'll come to us, we had a ZMA from Stonefield come before us. If you know Stonefield, most of everyone does, okay? So you know where Torchy's Tacos is located? Do you know where that is? Do you know where Torchy's Tacos is?
Yeah, I do.
If you look at Torchy's, is it, I think it's Torchy's.
You know.
If you look at Torchy's and then look right, stop it. And look right, there's an empty building at the end. They came to us to, for the ZMA, and Stonefield came, not the potential client, for an automobile sales for electric vehicles. They would, this, if it happens, if it come, when it comes to us and it goes to the supervisors, they would then be permitted to engage with a, a, an automobile manufacturer who does direct-to-consumer sales. Did I narrow it down any more, any, any further?
Yeah, we all know what you're saying.
And that they would then take some of the parking, which is, this would actually be quite helpful for that turn there. They would then have some vehicles stationed right next to them that would not be in and out, they would just be display. And then you'd have some other vehicles over on the other side of Brooks Brothers that they would, you could take out for, for a, a test driver if you so, you were so inclined. And so that's, I don't know when that's coming to us, but it'll come to us at some point here. But the real interesting thing is this piece here, which I'm going to send them all down there to you, and I'm going to send two over here, because since we live in this community and Kevin's going to come up and I'm going to give Kevin, I'm going to give Kevin this so Kevin can speak to it. Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm not trying to leave you out. There's more coming.
It's all the same?
It's all the same.
We got enough.
Well, no, Michael doesn't have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were automatic.
Michael doesn't have one and the secretary doesn't have one.
Thank, thank you, Kevin McDermott, Deputy Director of Planning. So I attended the meeting along with the Department of Transportation, just to kind of give an update on the hydraulic improvements. And what you're seeing here is the sort of public information marketing around the proposed closure of the Hillsdale hydraulic intersection, the one right there in front of Whole Foods. So as part of that project, they have to raise the grade up of that entire intersection by a few feet. And in order to prevent it from going on for two, three years of construction, they are going to shut it down entirely for a period of up to almost three months, two and a half months. So you can see on the sheet, it says between June 8th and August 13th. And we don't know if that's June 8th, August 13th, 2024, or 2025 yet. That is going to be, that is going to be up to the, the contractor that is doing this construction, independent on the right-of-way process. There are multiple other elements associated with the project. So the reason they don't know when is they don't, that they can switch it around and do other elements of the project at that time. So that, that's what we're seeing right here. This, this is supposed to be showing you how you can access any of the buildings around that intersection during that closure. And so this is available. You can go to the QR code on this, which brings you to the actual, the actual public information site for the entire project and gives you a lot more information overall. information site for the entire project, and gives you a lot more information overall. So I think that covered everything you needed.
That was everything I knew, because also, when people start sort of complaining that they can't get the Whole Foods to us, because, you know, we are those people, you can now have, you're more, you're, you're better informed, or you can at least talk to them about the map and give them the QR code.
Awesome. Thank you. I was just looking at the QR code myself to see if I could figure out that June to August, but.
And did you, did you figure it out?
Well, I mean, it says start date is winter 2024.
Well, there you go.
So, and, but it does say the end date is fall 2025, so it could be either, right?
No, I mean, construction started already.
Yeah, construction started this winter, winter 2024. So they're doing some work out there. It will continue all the way through until 2025, fall 2025. So that period of closure can either happen this summer or the next summer.
Got it. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Moore?
I went to the CAC meeting for the Rio Places 29. Just one main agenda item, which was, there's a proposal, okay, so if you, if you're on 29, you turn right onto Rio Road, it's Rio East, and it's right across from what used to be Abingdon Crossing, there's a church, and then there's like, two stoplights right next to each other, Northfield and Old Brook Road. So on the left side, there's a house, the right there, like, like between those two roads and right on Rio. The house has been used as an Airbnb for some time. The owner wants to change from R2 residential to C1 commercial, in order to build a 1,200-square-foot Vietnamese deli and boba tea place, and then continue operating the house, more or less as like a small inn, you know, rather than Airbnb, but same, the house stays the same. But yeah, so that, that'll eventually come to us. There's concerns about traffic and the intersection being bad, although you'd access it from across the street from the church entrance, not from Rio itself.
Ah, okay.
And the dude brought boba tea to give away.
Great, thank you.
Really?
Yeah. You good?
Yeah.
Thank you. The only thing I'll mention is Almarle Business, so the 5th and Avon Street. Commissioner Firehawk, are you going to do that?
The, the, the meeting on this Thursday? Yes, I am.
Okay, then I won't report on that. I was going to give a preview, but it could be there. Great. With that, I'll look to staff for the review of the Board of Supervisors meeting.
So at last, the last Board of Supervisors meeting, there were several presentations in the afternoon. TJ PDC came to talk about their Safe House to School grant, and there was a resolution in front of the board asking to support safety targets that will help in a guide that study that's moving forward. David Benish gave a presentation to the board, their midpoint on the Broadway Blueprint Plan, same thing that you all saw. So that went to the board, it's past time. Jessica gave her quarterly transportation report to the board, so that was in the afternoon. And then that evening, there were two rezoning applications. One was at 1906 Avon Street, you'll recall, sort of down the end of Avon. There was a fair amount of discussion about the construction entrance and, and traffic going through the neighborhood. The other one was.
Passed, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. It did pass. They both passed. And the other one was, the North Fork rezoning went to the board and also passed. That's.
Did Fred come to the meeting or no? Or did he recuse himself again?
I'm sorry, I was refused. It was well-briefed.
Ignore the, the hecklers at that end.
I'm doing my best. So the other matter that did go there, and thank you, Mr. Bivins, for bringing it up, stealing my thunder, was the jurisdictional question at Farmington. And it really had two components. One of it was, again, as was alluded to, they're doing some work on the campus there, and they need to move the sewer. The sewer was already served by, excuse me, the laundry. Laundry is already served by sewer, so they were requesting water for that building, which staff supported and was actually granted to them by the board. The other question was for a lightning shelter, that they wanted to have some restrooms in there, and that was not extended by the board, so.
You mean for like, the golf course, a lightning shelter? What do you mean?
Exactly.
Okay, you're out playing, and it's a storm, and you, okay.
Yeah. And you're stuck there for some time, and.
They have a clubhouse and a bar, too.
I don't think it was that intent. It was a much smaller facility, literally more to the gear towards the purpose we're talking about, but the board held a policy and didn't provide that for the, for sewer for that structure. So those were the two, those are the major things that happened at the board last week.
Great, thank you. How about AC 44 updates?
So AC 44, I would just like to say, we had a really great meeting last night down in Esmont. I think there was probably 60 to 70 people there. The conversation was really good. We broke them up into three different rooms. It's a great facility. If you've ever been there, or seen some of the activities going on there, it seems very vibrant. Kind of personal connection, because my kids went to school there, so that's cool, to be back in the building again. But anyhow, it was very great. The other thing I just wanted to call your attention to, we did split tonight's agenda, so we'll be coming back to you for rural areas at your next meeting in two weeks. But I think I just want to put you on warning that this summer, we probably will be having an increased workload of work sessions. Not only do we have a lot of stuff coming with Conference of Plan, we'll be bringing you other items that will, that we'll probably need to have more work sessions, and maybe have a third meeting in a month, to just sort of like, I know you guys want to talk, and so I want to give you guys plenty of time to, to talk. So I think it'd be good. We might need more meetings to do that.
I think it'd be good for, maybe it's just, maybe it's just a small group, or just me and you and Louise, but we could talk through kind of a roadmap of where we're headed, and try to get a sense of where those dates all fall.
Well, I can, I could tell you that's something that staff, that I've got the staff working on, and we are in the midst of doing that. Give us a couple of weeks.
Yeah, for sure.
We'll come through that, but I think what we're forecasting is during the summer.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Don't go on vacation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I'll send an email, but I won't be able to come to the meeting at the end of the month to the deferred comprehensive plan meeting.
To the deferred comprehensive?
Yeah, that item that we were going to do in our work session.
The next meeting on the 27?
Yeah, I have, I'm on a federal committee, and I'm being sent somewhere.
Okay.
So I can't. We're in Mexico.
Well.
But I guess I could remote it.
Yeah.
Okay. I might, all right, I might try to do that.
That'd be great. We would miss you.
I don't like the giant head thing.
Just to your voice, then.
Yeah, just turn off your video.
Yeah.
Just to your voice.
But that head was tweeted out by some of our, our fans.